Good afternoon, it's three o'clock and I call to order the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session for Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer-Hoffin.
Uh huh.
Director Duff.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
President.
President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you, we have quorum.
Seeing that all directors are present, we can skip item three. We'll also be skipping item four, we'll do that on Tuesday. Item five, rules of procedure, counselor.
So according to the rules of procedure adopted by the Board of Directors, all noticed meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The president of the board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The president is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the president. No member of the board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting, and the board president regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Item six, public input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board?
President Sewell, there are no members of the public online.
Seeing none, we're going to make a slight change in the agenda order. We're going to move item fifteen up in front of item seven, and that is Desert Water Agency replenishment assessment charge report.
President Sewell, we do have representative from DWA present, and they will be giving this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm Esther Seines, I'm the Finance Director at the Desert Water Agency, and we also have our Assistant General Manager Steve Johnson and our General Manager Mark Kraus, and as well as one of our board members, Director Bowman here with us today. And we appreciate and thank you for the invitation to come and speak with you in regards to the Desert Water Agency's replenishment assessment charge, as well as we're adding in the state water project tax as well. And your General Manager Macy has provided us with a list of questions that you had provided to us, but we had prepared a, what we believe is a foundational presentation regarding our replenishment assessment charge and state water project tax that we feel would be beneficial to, to start there. And then, of course, we're gonna, we'd be happy to address any questions that you have that were not addressed and that you still may have after the presentation. So on the topics of, of our presentation today is first the replenishment assessment charge, then the state water project tax, and how they work together, because we use both of them in order to fund the operations of the state water project and our recharge practices. And then, of course, we'll have some time for some questions as well. First, the replenishment assessment charge. Groundwater production and continues to exceed natural groundwater replenishment, and is expected really to do so indefinitely, and this is within the Mission Creek Sub Basin, specifically where this is taken from out of our engineers' report, but it's also the conditions within our Indio Sub Basin as well. And therefore, we do require replenishment activities using imported water supplies that are necessary to offset the annual and cumulative gross overdraft within the sub basin. So the agency's replenishment assessment charge, you also, I may also call it the RAC, as we refer to it. It's a charge for every acre foot of water produced within the agency's boundaries to support the agency's recharge program. And in California Water Code, Appendix one hundred fifteen point four, it indicates the agency shall have power to levy and collect water replenishment assessments as provided in this section for the purposes of replenishing groundwater supplies within the agency. And now, how is the RAC determined? Every year, the agency has caused us to be prepared a third-party engineering report about the agency's recharge program. It is an annual report that, an evaluation that is required by that California Code Water Section. And whenever I make any reference to the California Code or Water Code, it is in, in regards to that California Water Code Appendix one hundred, and that specifically is, pertains to the Desert Water Agency only. Within that annual report, that, that engineering survey must contain conditions on groundwater supplies, replenishment needs, replenishment program recommendations, a cost evaluation, as well as a RAC rate recommendation according to the area of benefit. When we reference the area of benefit, that is, there's two areas of benefit that are identified within that engineer's report, and that is the Indio Sub Basin as well as Mission Creek Sub Basin. And currently, the Indio and Mission Creek Sub Basins are levied at the same RAC rate. Programs. If programs are added in the future to the RAC that provide benefit to only one sub basin, there'll be two different RAC rates levied, one for each sub basin. Another question that we heard was that why are pumpers billed based on production? Not only just billed, but allowable charges are really the basis for setting our rate, so it is how it's billed, but also how the rate is determined. So RAC revenue is used to fund the Desert Water Agency's groundwater replenishment program. The allowable charges that are used as a foundation, not only foundation, but the whole basis for setting that rate are defined in that California Water Code section. The allowable RAC charges are variable operation, maintenance, power, and replacement components of the state water project transportation charges. And that appears on the Desert Water Agency Statement of Charges from the Department of Water Resources. In addition, on that statement from the Department of Water Resources, we have the state water project delta water charge. Also included in that RAC rate is the supplemental replenishment water costs that the agency pays, replenishment water spreading costs, as well as it allows for recycled water treatment and distribution costs. I think I was on the wrong slide. But I would like to point out, on that last bullet, it talks about the recycled water costs. Desert Water Agency does not currently include any recycled water program costs inside of that RAC rate, even though the Water Code allows for it to. Now, another important point that I'd like to point out here is that the agency's RAC rate is artificially low. It's currently subsidized by the agency's tax rate. So of all the charges that were mentioned, those first four bullets, the agency does not collect enough on a rack to be able to pay all of them. So there are certain charges that the tax rate can then go and cover, which I'll get a little bit into later, and that's how we subsidize the RAC rate, and it is lower. And in addition to it currently not being sufficient to cover all of those costs, it hasn't been sufficient within the last twenty years. In two thousand sixteen seventeen, the agency's Board of Directors used reserves to write off a cumulative deficit of approximately twenty-seven million dollars. As it was, felt it was really unfeasible to collect from future producers the deficit that was accumulated from prior recharge activities. Now, ultimately, it's the agency's goal to bring that RAC rate up to a point where it covers the current cost per year per acre foot, and the agency plans to increase that RAC rate by twenty dollars each year until approximately twenty thirty-six, when according to current projections that we have and cost estimates available, the agency will be collecting sufficient RAC revenues to cover the agency's RAC expenditures for each given year. Now, I know that was a lot that I just covered. I want to pause here for a second. Is there any specific questions about the last few slides that you would have any questions on?
Yeah, it's not necessarily a question, it's more of a comment. It might be helpful in the future, this is just a minor observation for us to get this presentation earlier for, for a binder, so we can do our homework and maybe generate more meaningful questions.
Yeah, absolutely. And at, at the end of the presentation, we were going to suggest that, you know, by no means is this meant to be a one and done, in, in our view. We understand it's a lot of information to take in, and without the time really to have that in advance and prepare your questions, please prepare your questions, please submit your questions. We're happy to come back at it in a future month and to be able to address them with you, because ultimately, it allows you time to do your homework, as well as for us to provide the most, the best answer for you, and the most complete answer rather than anything just off the top of our head.
Thank you. So we're, you just said, the, the goal is to, to basically go up twenty dollars per year until twenty, was it thirty-six?
Twenty thirty-six, yes.
Okay, but that is, that's projected now, that doesn't take into account anything the state may come down price-wise or mandate-wise on you, correct?
So it does include current cost projections based off of those transportation charges and costs that were previously detailed in the.
And just real fast, the site's reservoir, is that gonna end up factoring into that later down the road?
So it, the site's reservoir becomes a part of the state water project, then it will be on the Department of Resources billings to the agency, and the capital charges will be covered by the tax, but the transportation charges of that water will be included in the RAC as well. So it will be a part of the delivery cost that the RAC is, that the RAC covers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have any questions?
I'm, I'm still kind of digesting, but I do have just one. You said that the tax rates were subsidizing the RAC rate, and they haven't been sufficient, and caused a twenty-seven million dollar deficit from the twenty years prior. But isn't it true that the twenty years prior, there was no replenishment being done to the Mission Creek Sub Basin, because there was no way to do so?
So that is something that we can definitely bring back in the presentation, unless Steve, the remark you would like to address that now. It was two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen is when the, the, the charge off happened.
But it was for the twenty years prior, or for the?
Not, it was, it has not been sufficient to cover all of the recharge costs or, or the transportation costs for those prior years, which has been, the last year it was sufficient was twenty years prior.
Okay, thank you.
Director Meyer-Hoffin.
At this time, thank you.
If you'd like to proceed, thank you.
Thank you very much. And so why are billers not based on pumpers based on replenishment? If the agency were to bill producers based on replenishment, it would be as if the sub basin was being used like a savings account, where there would be an account for each individual pumper within the sub basin. And the water would be, that is replenished, would really be set aside for each individual user in a given quantity, and this will require contracts for each pumper, as well as to determine the amount of the replenishment set aside for each pumper. Unfortunately, this would place limitations on future private pumpers to drill wells, and with, or not plan enough for it to be set aside for them in the replenishment. So we do, the Desert Water Agency Water Code, it does allow only for the, based off of production rather than off of replenishment. Additionally, some, in some years, there's no water available for delivery from the state water project, but there are still costs associated, and expenditure timing does not always align with delivery, so use is not always aligning with delivery. With billing based off of production, the water within the Mission Creek Sub Basin is available for use for all pumpers, current and future, within the sub basin, and is not paid for until it's produced. DWA has placed, essentially placed the inventory on itself, really, the water and storage, but thinking as inventory, Desert Water Agency is covering the carrying costs until it is actually used in the quantity that is known. This next slide, you feel, provides a great representation of that deliveries do not always equal use. The production line in the center there, that is over the past twenty-one years of the water that was produced within the Mission Creek Sub Basin in total. And that, as compared to the deliveries, those deliveries is the artificial replenishment. So that, that's the imported water that is being brought in and replenished to the sub basin, as well as other recharge, which includes the natural inflow and other sources of, of recharge. And the goal ideally would be to match the deliveries with production. But this is not possible, given the uncertainties of the, the deliveries of the state water project due to variability of hydrological conditions from year to year that impacts the water of the amount that's allocated to the agency year to year. While we do have our entitlement, it really is just a percentage of a whole that tells us how much we get each year based off of how much water is available. Additionally, there's no physical infrastructure to receive water deliveries to the Coachella Valley. In order to replenish the aquifer with imported water, DWA has entered into an exchange agreement with the Metropolitan Water District, where DWA exchanges allocation of state water project water for Colorado River water. And there is infrastructure to deliver that Colorado River water to the Coachella Valley. However, delivery timings from the Colorado River, they vary from the state water project delivery. In some years, Metropolitan may advance to deliver water, and in other years, it's possible to receive no water at all, despite there being a state water project allocation or delivery schedule for that year. For these reasons, long-term advanced planning is, is incredibly important and required. There have already been advanced deliveries made to the Mission Creek Sub Basin to ensure water is available when and where it's needed. And before I move on to the state water project tax, is there any other questions that you have in regards to the deliveries?
I'll submit them later, I don't digest.
Thank you. Just for clarification, when you say the pumpers, the commercial type of people who?
It is everybody with a well. So everybody that drills a well includes Mission Springs Water District, it includes the, the Gulf Corus, and there's a couple, there, the power plant. It includes all pumpers that have a well within the Mission Creek Sub Basin.
Okay, now, doesn't residential wells come under Coachella Valley water?
Residential? Any well within the Desert Water Agency's area of benefit is charged a RAC that, just as long as it is not a minimal pumper that is believed is under ten acre feet in a given year.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a comment that I'd like to make at this time, and I would, I don't know whether it's appropriate or not, but I would like our General Manager to weigh in periodically with any questions he has, as well as from the board or any observations that you care to make. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
So moving on to the agency's state water project tax. So what's the tax used for? It's used to pay the fixed or capital costs associated with the state water project. The state water project RAC expenses in excess of RAC revenues, where it's infeasible to collect enough revenue from the RAC, as we were discussing a little bit earlier, the state water project tax can cover these charges. Now, they must be on the Statement of Charges from the Department of Water Resources, that is a requirement. The state water project tax may not be used for anything unless it is on that Statement of Charges. An additional thing to note is that Desert Water Agency, we can only set one tax rate within our tax rate area for the state water project. And how do they work together? We have a kind of a simple explanation of purchasing a car. The state water project tax purchases that car. Whether you use it or not, you still have to buy it, that's what the tax is for. But we use the car. The RAC covers the maintenance and operation, and essentially the gas of that car, that's what the RAC covers. Now, there are some things that, that you can essentially roll into the tax, as I was describing earlier, if the RAC isn't enough. But that is essentially how it works, capital versus the car use.
Okay. It's a nice analogy, because I've used it, but I guess one of the issues that I'm having is especially when I look at that graph, is so if you're using the, the car and the gas as an analogy, what you're saying is that we get paid on how much gas we use, not much how much we fill up at the tank. So I could use a tank full of gas, go to the gas station, buy half a tank, but I'm still paying full tank, that's how the RAC works, right?
The RAC works once you've actually used it. So you aren't, you aren't paying for when you put the gas in the tank, you're paying for when you've used it. Desert Water Agency is essentially covering the cost first for the tank being filled, and then you're only paying for when it's actually being used.
He's thinking.
So I would liken it to when you use your vehicle for company purposes. You get reimbursed. You're fronting the cost until you actually used it for a legitimate company purpose, and then you're reimbursed by the.
But so. Okay.
Let me give a try at this. What you're saying is, when you fill that tank up, that's for the actual cost to fill the tank up. Then, after that, we're paying for the cost of the water to be delivered to that tank.
So the water has already been delivered to the tank, so the water is delivered to the sub basin. Desert Water Agency is fronting the entire cost upfront. And then, once that water is used, so once the car has been used to travel that distance, then, and only then, you're paying the, only the amount that you actually used. So if you stopped using the vehicle, and there was, there was water left, there was gas left in the tank, that you would never have to pay for that.
Okay, I understand. Just to follow up from what's, what's been said, I, I think the problem has been in the past is that a lot of these questions haven't been discussed or, or talked with us prior to understand that, that we could go a number of years without any recharge, water being put in there, and yet get charged for it, and you had earlier slide talked about cost and expenses even when you don't put water in there. And could you maybe touch on that? On that, what other, what other costs associated, even though you're not putting water in them?
Yeah, absolutely. So within the desert, the Department of Water Resources Statement of Charges for the state water project, there are different costs that were put up on there, let me put them up just so we can have them to talk about. Okay, variable operation and maintenance charges, those are your literal variable charges. You will, if you don't take any water, if there are no deliveries, we do not pay them. But when you have the delta charge, it's still considered a transportation charge. It's not based off deliveries, but it's still a part of the transportation. So there's, and then there's other minimum charges that are based off of transportation that just, they don't, they don't change. So they, even when we don't receive any water, there's still minimum costs.
Okay, just to follow up to that, General Manager Macy, do you, do you have any observations or input concerning that particular issue, because that's not what we've been led to believe in the past, we're not getting any benefit, and we're still getting charged, this been the mantra from our previous general manager, so I'd like you to touch on that if you would, please.
I can't speak for our previous general manager, but, but from that perspective, I, I guess the question I would have, and it relates to that, is we, you talked about having a deficit for some years, so the question is, how do you track that, and you do it separately, and then what internal reports, cost and revenue, or any other things like that, could we get a hold of, so we could know where we stand as far as either paying too much into the system, or actually being in a deficit?
Okay, so for the first part of your question, in regards to how we track it, so we do have the engineer's report that does lay out all of the costs that are, they're in summary tables within, within the report, that provide to be able to track that deficit.
Okay.
And so that is in there within the table within the report. And now, when you say your portion of that, whether it's being overpaid or not, so we're managing it on a long-term basis. So granted, because deliveries do not match up with that, you know, how it is done is all, all of the payments go into the pot and essentially is averaged out, you know, over time, and it becomes the deficit that's added up. So it is a long-term planning, and so they may not align year for year, but you're only getting charged for what you're using, and we are not charging enough.
I just wanna, I just wanna go back a little bit. So you said that on the years where there is no delivery, the variable operation, maintenance, power, and replacement charges and components of those transportation charges are not charged. But our RAC fee isn't reduced on the years that we don't get anything. So can you explain what kind of credit we're receiving to offset what you're saying we are underpaying all along?
So water has gone and been put essentially into the inventory. So if we think of the inventory analogy of we, it was put on the shelf in a prior year, but that, there's still costs to it. And so you're only charged that cost when you take it off the shelf. But just because there was no more additions in that year, we still had items on the shelf that had a cost. So you're paying for that as you take it out.
And, and I, I understand that part, but I guess where my, sorry, where my biggest confusion is, is that there's no variance. So you showed on that graph that the natural recharge brought us almost to our production needs on several times when we received no replenishment from DWA. But we didn't get any variance in what was, what we pumped out. What, what other private wells, the power company and CBWD take out from the same sub basin, we're not getting any credit for what we didn't receive benefit of. And I'm just trying to understand how that's tracked in your system to where you can tell us that it's in a deficit, yet we're seeing a deficit from what we're receiving from you.
Okay, so for one portion of your question in regards to credits being received for natural recharge, so, and one of your questions that you presented was rainfall and snowmelt. The agency, you know, whether or not that is, the recharge amount is included, I mean, the natural other inflows are included, there is still a cost that has to be spread. So we cup, we replenish it on all production. If we only did it off of production in excess of natural recharge, then we would have more costs to spread over less water, therefore, the amount would be the same, that you would be paying, it would just be calculated differently. Because the costs still remain the same for the replenishment program.
Irregardless of benefit for each pumper.
Could you restate that?
Irregardless of the direct replenishment benefit for each pumper within the district.
The replenishment is to the benefit of every current and future pumper within the area of benefit, and is only charged when it is, the water is taken out. And is only charged when it is, the water is taken out of storage and produced. So you're receiving the benefit when and where you need it and not paying for it in advance when it's being put in, only when it's being taken out.
Okay, let me ask this a little bit differently. In the replenishment provided to Mission Creek, are there separate amounts that are being replenished that are not showing on our specific benefit report that are going to the pumpers such as CBWD, the power plant uh, and the other private businesses that have their own wells?
What benefit reporter are you talking about?
The
Are they the bills?
I guess the the graph referring to the the graph and then what we're paying, what you're saying is our charges for the the rack charges. Are you, are they also paying those same fees and they're getting separate replenishments? Are you replenishing those private, those private wells separately or are they drawing from what you put into our creek?
Understood. Okay, um, so the, on this chart here, it is all production. This is not Mission Springs Water District well production. This is everything. And so um we manage it as a whole. So no one is, no water is being set aside for any individual producer. In any sort of quantity is only charged and to them when they draw the water out.
So what we exchange, what what was owed to us from Met that has been exchanged? And I'm speaking specifically for our district. What has been allotted to our district? Is we're also covering the private pumpers, the wells and and all of them in that figure? Is that the case?
Uh, actually, Mission Springs Water District has not been allotted any amounts. So it is not managed in that way. As I was speaking before about the savings account, that is not how it's managed. The water has not been set aside for each individual producer. Not to say that we don't take the information as and say what the production is. So that's what the need is. So that's what we planned for. But no amount has been set aside in account specifically for Mission Springs Water District wells. It is so managed as a whole for the basin needs.
Uh, please.
I think, let me try and clarify. I think what she's asking is, so on this chart here, this is total production overall for the sub basin.
Correct.
But I think what she's asking is those other entities are then charged the the rack for what they've produced individually.
Correct. Everybody is charged the same rack rate.
But based on, if if we take out a million, say a million gallons and someone else takes five hundred thousand gallons. It's based on their production, not we're
Correct.
We're not paying everybody else's production. They're paying their individual.
One hundred percent.
That was part of it, but go ahead.
Clarify, this isn't the entire sub, sub, this does not represent the entire sub basin. This represents the area of benefit for um, our boundary for desert water.
Oh, so this is not specifically just Mission Creek. This is not It is speaking to D W A, including Palm Springs and everything?
No, just for the Mission Creek uh, sub basin. But it doesn't include uh, like the um, Desert Hot Springs sub basin. And it doesn't, so this includes uh, pumpers uh, Mission Springs. It includes a C V W D's uh, production and then third party pumpers within the Mission Creek. Yes, okay. And and I I think what you're asking is, does every pumper pay a rack charge? Yes, they they pay the same rack fee greater than anyone who pumps more than ten uh acre feet of water. Though they pay a rack fee and it's it's the same fee amount. Hopefully that.
Yeah, it was, I was under the impression that Mish, that Mission Springs Water District is part of our previous agreements. The allotment that we were owed from Metropolitan that was transferred and exchanged with Colorado River was something like eight thousand acre feet a year or something of that nature, which I believe was in your, um, when we went and toured.
Yeah.
That's what we were told at the time. So I'm asking if that was for us. Is there additional rep that we don't see here that you're providing to these additional pumpers or are CBWD and these other pumpers taking from what we've been allocated?
Okay, yeah, it it's not allocated to any individual pumper. What you, what you're describing or talking about is when we receive state water project water. Uh, what we do is we look at production in the India sub basin, in the Mission Creek sub basin. And then we determine the production percentages. And then we then spread the water. For example, in Mission Creek, the total production is around eight percent. In India, it's around ninety two percent. So we then will try, we will deliver the water at that percentage to each basin. It's not allocated to Mission Springs Water District or the power plant. It's, it's just a total amount. And what has happened, back in the mid uh, two thousands, uh, there was an over deliver, uh, delivery of water into the Mission Creek Basin. A lot of it had to do with uh, the Indio whitewater facilities where they were going through some construction issues. I think there was a storm. They cannot receive water. So uh, Met was still wanting to deliver water. We had the facilities available at Mission Springs and and or Mission Creek. I'm sorry if I get Mission Creek and Mission Springs is Mission Creek Basin. So we delivered um, more than the eight percent of what should have been delivered into the Mission Creek Basin. And that has caused an over-delivery of the advanced delivered water. And and that's, it's right now, it's a, as of this year, at the end of this year, it's it's around thirteen thousand acre feet of water. Should have actually been put into the Indio sub basin. But it's, it's in the Mission Creek sub basin. And we're trying to balance that out. So uh, so like last year, we delivered water to the basin cause it had it to Mission Creek Basin. It had been a couple of years since we had delivered water. We hadn't had any water. And we knew we needed, we wanted to get some water in there, even though it was uh, it's unbalanced. We put our uh, just over fifty two hundred acre feet of water into the Mission Creek Basin. It it increased that unbalance portion to the basin. But we felt it was uh, we had, we had some water available and we felt since it had been a couple of years, we we should put some water into the basin um, to to um, look at the water levels and so forth to try to keep that, those levels stabilized. It's hopefully that answers your question. I I, it it is complicated.
When I see this graph, I don't see how you could have, what was it? Did you say thirteen thousand over still? I I mean, I, I see some over deliveries, but I see two thousand eight, two thousand nine, no deliveries, not much in twenty thirteen, not much in twenty fourteen, nothing. Twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And so I'm, I'm trying to figure out what are the exact numbers here where we're saying we're still over out of balance by thirteen thousand?
So it it's
Let me add that. I'm really sorry, just none of this is addressing the twenty years of which we paid into all of these fees and had no ability to receive any recharge. So it's not, if you're, you're talking about twenty years here, but you're ignoring the twenty years before and it's all the same. I just wanted to say that, sorry.
Okay, so first of all, yeah, it it, our graph, uh, this graph here, what, what we, this is showing is just production versus how much has been re uh, put into the basin, whether it's natural inflow or our uh, deliveries of the water. When I'm, what I'm talking about is about of over-delivering is the actual state water project water we have available to deliver. It it, it doesn't have to do with production or anything of that nature. It has to do just with the amount of allotted water that the state water project for any particular year has uh, allowed us to receive. And when you take that from when we first started delivering water in twenty, two thousand and two to our current year. That that's, cause in two thousand and three is when we had our uh, settlement agreement. Uh, and and that established how the water would be delivered to the basins and so when you take that span of years and you look at strictly how much water should have gone into each basin, that's where it's over-delivered.
How much should have gone into Mission Creek?
How much total has gone in?
How much on annual allotments is, is, is it supposed to receive? In other words, if it's X, what is the base that which you say the rest is over?
It's, it's based on, so we look at the prior year's uh, production.
Okay.
And for example, in twenty twenty two, we looked, we look at Indio sub basin versus Mission Creek sub basin. And the production percentages was ninety two percent of the total production.
I I get the percentages. I'm asking.
So then, then what we do is uh, we get our allocation set by D W R. And then uh, Met will work with, we have to work around their schedule too. They're delivering the water.
Okay, I'm gonna make this really simple, okay? I'm trying to be rude.
No, I I'm trying to.
I I just, can, can we get numbers by year? So I can see this is what we should have gotten and this is what we've, we did, we did get. In other words, if in year twenty two thousand two, we should have gotten six thousand and we got ten thousand. Can we see year by year what we should have gotten for that year and what we did get that year? Cause on this chart and you say it was just production, I see here's a delivery thing, right? So when I look at this, if you're saying that um, okay, you're offsetting the annual cumulative gross overdraft, okay? I don't know what we're supposed to receive. So if you just do a chart and don't say what we're actually supposed to receive, it's hard for me to sit here and say, take your word at it that we're over by thirteen thousand or whatever the number was. I'm, I'm not a, anyone that knows me knows, I don't believe people, what people say. I'm, I'm a fact person. So if I could just see the numbers, I could better understand.
Are you referring to this, this chart?
No, I'm referring to the chart right in front of.
Oh, this? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the engineer's report that we, that Esther had mentioned about outlines year by year the amount of water that has been allocated and been delivered to
Okay.
Basin. It 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 lists that from uh, how it goes back since, how far back Mark? Nineteen nine, nineteen seventy three.
Can you send that? I just, I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good resource for anyone who wants to uh, understand uh, the how the water deliveries is the engineer's report had, lists.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what I'm looking for is give me some hard numbers.
Is, can I ask clarifying question? Are you looking at the production and saying and thinking that that is what you're supposed to be delivered? Because that's not, I just want to make sure that that would.
No, I mean, when you look at this chart, that's what it looks like. No, what I, that's why I'm trying to ask. What is the number? So we know, okay, look, because we do get these questions of if, if someone from the public's looking at this and they're gonna say, well, look, here's no delivery here, 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 here and here. How can you say we're over? But if I have a sheet with numbers, I can say, but if you look at this, these, this is what we were allocated.
Yeah.
This is what we got. And so I I know the allocation changes by year.
Correct, yeah.
So, but that's, that's not in this chart. This chart's more generic. So I'm looking for a little bit.
Yeah, when I, we could put together a graph um, that shows that uh, from the engineer's report. And again, um, the water is not allocated to any individual pumper. It's allocated to the basins.
Right.
You agree with the question? And I, I apologize if, if I was rambling in. It's making sense, but I, I, it it is something that.
I'm just, just, just get to the point. I don't, I don't like backstory. I dealt with that with other people who work with this organization and they're kind of used to me by now. It's like, I just, just give me some numbers. I'm cool.
Yeah, thanks. Definitely we can do.
We'll all understand what's going on here, but the folks at home, just for clarification, that twenty dollar increase is not going to affect our residential customers in any way, is it?
It will, it will. I mean, obviously I'm speaking to how you're setting your rates, but I can speak to how it impacts our rates. So whenever we increase our rack, it, we charge ourselves that rack as well for everything produced that goes to our residential customers. So that is a cost that is built into our residential water rate or our retail water rate, I should say.
So that cost will be on the G W A's bill?
Yes, the bill that is remitted to Mission Springs for the replenishment assessment charge, that it will be included on those bills.
And and then we as a pass through included on our bills as a G W A rack rate.
So this rate is going to cause our residential customers an
Increase all of our customers. Anyone that, we're the retail agency, so we have to pay them as a state water contractor. So then we pass that through as that charge on our bill and it is a line item by itself.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that was all clear to whoever might be listening at home, what's happening.
Great point. And also it's per acre foot and not for consumptive unit that you may charge. So it's a much less charge for them.
Well, I think um, like you alluded to earlier, I'm sure we'll have maybe some more questions for you. But we really appreciate you coming out and giving the presentation and hopefully we can do it again.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much for your time and your questions and your attention and we look forward to your questions, uh, continued questions. And we welcome the invitation to come back and and present again. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much too. And uh, I am, I'm Steve Johnson. I hadn't really introduced myself. Uh, I will be replacing Mark when he retires. Next week, right? Next week. So just wanted to introduce myself and uh, as Esther said, we if you have any questions, just put them together and and
That was on the news.
And we'll uh,
They did, they did a um, a segment on the news at noon today.
Oh.
So Ashley was there.
Oh, oh, all right, all right.
I do have one quick question about that. There's a rumor going around about, I don't know if going around, but something that I heard about the uh, power plant. Does G W A collect any tax revenue from that power plant?
The, the power plant up here in uh, in uh, CB, CBP? That's to answer a question.
Uh, the power plant, so the power plants are, their, their taxes are managed by the um, oh goodness, it just S B E's, date permanent equalization. Um, and they assess that for them. So they look how the, the unitary taxes are managed is you, they look at the asset as a whole in the whole state and then the state allocates it. So um, indirectly, yes.
Can you give us an amount that you're collecting from that?
I cannot. The state does not provide that to me.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the state provides us totals. So I know how much unitary tax we receive as a whole. I know how much ad valorem tax we receive as a whole, and I know how much general purpose tax we receive as a whole. And that's how they provide that information to us when they remit their payments.
Thank you very much.
Would you please step up the microphones so folks at home can hear you? Not, you're not retired yet.
Speaking from the peanut gallery. Um, I just wanted to say, and you may not know or you may know, that um, they imported all the water that they're using. They have a surplus of water. Um, so and then they're paying replenishment assessment on top of that. So they pay for it twice, basically. And so that helps everybody in the basin. Really, you have a higher water levels right now than you would have otherwise if they weren't here. And there's more revenue stream coming in. Uh, we didn't have to purchase that water. So financially, the basin's better for it too. That's something that uh, I think gets overlooked sometimes. But we are getting a piece of the, the tax that they're paying to. We just don't know what it is. There's just something too that um, Director Duffy said, you know, you're getting billed for water in years where we're not making a delivery. Director Duffy said, you know, you're getting billed for water in years where we're not making a delivery. You know, we, we're picking up the tab for all the water that we're putting in storage, we have quite a bit of water in storage right now. Which is a good thing, you have to have the, uh, water in storage for signal, right, either. You're, you're either balanced or you're plus, those are the only thing, only things you can be in signal rooms, you get, you get regulated. Um, so when you're drawing that water out in a year when we're not getting delivery. All we're doing is really getting paid back for the, you know, expense of putting that water into storage, I don't know if that helps you at all, but.
I was specifically referring to the transportation charges that were included in the rack fees in years that we didn't get transportation of.
That's what I'm saying.
So you're saying it's, it's, that just transfers into then the storage costs?
Yeah.
Transportation cost, it just gets put into your storage cost bucket.
That's right, so storage, and then we just kind of get paid back over, over time, but, I mean, I think that's a simpler.
Thank you.
Analogy.
Since you're still there, don't walk away, there was one question that I didn't get to ask that I keep getting asked from my neighbors. And that is about Tropical Storm Hillary, we haven't really heard any updates from D W A regarding. The damage to the replenishment pond that we've been talking about, could you please update us on? The status of when those repairs will be complete and and the status of the damage that was done.
I think Steve was really prepared to give you that answer.
Thank you.
So.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so, um. The, the work we have just now, um. Worked with a contractor to do, to move the dirt out of that debris basin at that fronts our ponds. And right now, I will go to our board on Tuesday for approval. It's, uh, just over three hundred thousand dollars, and we are working with FEMA to, to. Hopefully get some funding for that. The contractor hasn't given us a full schedule, however, he's, uh. He said that they are able to work fairly quickly once it is approved. So we're anticipating the work to be done, hopefully within the next, uh, couple months.
Great.
On that end, thanks, so.
And are you able to give us an estimate, I mean, three hundred thousand doesn't seem that bad, but. From the aerial photos, we got to see the ponds looked pretty destroyed. Do you have it, just from your own personal seeing it, I'm sure, can you describe that to us?
Well, how those ponds were designed, they worked perfectly, they were designed to, uh, that front basin. To take any brunt from storm surge that comes down the, the mountain. Uh, they did exactly that, it did fill, fill that debris basin almost to the, to the brim. And and it, um, saved the, the ponds below where we put the, uh, imported water in. So as far as, um, devastation, it it does look fairly bad. Uh, we are going to harden some areas, uh, now that we understand a little bit more what can happen and where the water will come from. Uh, during a major storm like that, we can do, uh, some, we're, we're going to do a little more hardening on that, um. Northwest corner of, of the, the basins there to, to, uh, so that they don't get as much erosion on there. Yeah. You're welcome.
Thank you. Moving on, item seven we'll do on Tuesday. Human Resources Report.
Yes, President.
All right, action items. Item eight, approval of the update of the Developer Contractor Handbook and Guidelines for the Design and Construction of Water and Sewer Facilities. It is recommended that the board approve the updated Mission Springs Water District Developer Contractor Handbook and Guidelines for Design and Construction. Of Water and Sewer Facilities, February two thousand twenty-four edition.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell, uh, our engineering manager Eric Webb will be giving this presentation.
Yes, good afternoon, uh. Good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board. Item eight of this, uh, afternoon's agenda pertains to the engineering staff. Updating the district's developers and contractors handbook. And this agenda item follows up from the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, study session, study session. In which I initially presented. That the developer and contractors handbook, guidelines for construction and design for water and sewer facilities. Would be updated and refreshed to reflect current district policies and construction standards. So to refresh everyone's memory, this handbook is a guide for developers, engineers, and contractors. Who are looking to develop and construct improvements within our district service area that necessitates water and wastewater services. The last update of the handbook was in September twenty twelve. And over the last, over the last past ten plus years approval procedures. Um, updated state laws requiring developers to provide water use studies pertaining to their proposed developments. And updating more efficient ways to provide submittals to the district are examples of what staff updated. Uh, we would like to, we would like to have you scan through the document, the updated draft of the, of the handbook. And we solicit your thoughts and comments. So please note that the contractors handbook updates. They will exclude, in the future, they will exclude approved, the approved materials list. Because suppliers and manufacturers that are listed as a fluid list, and many become, um. Bought out, or they go bankrupt, or they change names. As well as the changing materials, as well as changing materials and technologies. So coupled with that are the M S W D standard drawings that go hand in hand with the materials list. Which will also need to be continually updated, and that's a fluid document as well. So before I open it up to questions. Uh, I received word that there were a few questions, uh, that I know of, uh, that pertain to the handbook. And one was, uh, there was a reference in there for a one acre demonstration garden. Uh, and, um, apparently that was a reference, an old reference to. Not only the garden, that the demonstration garden between the administration building and the engineering building here. But also included areas, uh, to the east of the administration building near where the cellular tower is. So that obviously is not an acre, and that will be updated. Likewise, uh, just make sure that the plants that are shown in the, uh, existing demonstration garden here. Do reflect the, uh, landscape requirements for residential development. And those requirements identify plants and species, and, uh, I ask that our landscape. Uh, architect consultant to swing by there and make sure that both, uh, the. The plants that are in the demonstration garden, as well as the, uh, list that we have for residential development. That they coincide, and, uh, I received an email last night that they do. Um, so with that, I'll, uh, open it up for any questions.
Director Duffy.
Surprise, surprise.
Thank you, Eric, for addressing the one acre garden, I know several of us had a question on that, um. Let's see, one point oh six point oh one, number four, number five, and number six. And the only reason these three caught my attention is because I recently went through purchasing a new home in Desert Hot Springs with a local developer. And none of those things happened. Um, I, there were no water conservation materials at the model home, there were no water conservation materials. Provided to me as a homeowner, in fact. The, the project manager, when doing the walkthrough, told us that, oh yeah, this, these landscaping things here were required. The minute you close, you can tear them all out, put grass or whatever you want. And then, um, when they talked about the landscaping and irrigation plans, I'm just asking about, um. The, the garden which you've just addressed, so I can take that off my list. But who, how do we follow up on the developers following this? Do we have someone that goes to the model home before they open it to the public and see if they have? These conservation items and things that talk about that?
Yes, ma'am, uh, we do have, we have, we have a consultant, Ray Lopez. And associates, and they do, uh, do inspections for all homes. Um, and, uh, they make sure they have, they do have our. Uh, landscape and development ha, um, standards for, for, uh, drought tolerant plants. So they do do that, uh, I get notices of, uh, certification from them occasionally to sign off. And so we do have actually eyes, uh, viewing the actual properties to look at the emitters. As well as the, the drought tolerant plants. What happens after that? It, it's, it is true, um. Homeowners. May have the option of getting that signed off once they buy the home, and, um, they are, uh. They can, they can revise their landscaping, um. After it's been inspected and, and the home's purchased.
I guess I'm more asking if it's here, then who makes sure that the developers in their model homes are doing this? And what water saving kits and material, conservation materials, were they supposed to leave a new home buyer? In their developed property, because that didn't happen in my case three years ago. So I'm just trying to figure out, if we're asking them to do this, how are we making sure it's done, or should we not ask for them to do that?
I, I think they should be asked to do that, um, and it's, and it's our responsibility. I can't tell you where the breakdown is, but I will, I'll find out, uh, and if there's any brochures that we need to provide these developers. To hand out to homeowners, then, uh, we can certainly do that.
Any way we can get them to buy into our community's wonderful conservation mentality, the better. Um, then section two point oh two, system analysis. And my understanding that based on the zoned areas that the developer is developing. There are specific usage and flow rate standards that we calculate for those specific. Uh, zoning. Developments, does that make, does that question make sense to you, Eric, I'm sorry? If it doesn't, I can try and rephrase.
You say this is on, uh, this is.
Two point oh two, the system analysis. And it was talking about, you know, how they come up with the max flow based on residential, based on commercial. I'm assuming based on agricultural, industrial. My main question is, if we base all of our future and, and the needs of that developed community and those development costs. On those figures, if, and it's legal in our city for, you know. The city to, uh, offer business licenses at differently zoned. Areas, shouldn't there be an additional development fee that would attach to? That license that changes what the developer paid to be there? Like if they opened up a restaurant in their garage or, or, or some sort of, uh, you know, um. Manufacturing business in their garage, when it was a residential, rezoned and permitted and development paid. Project, that's using or potentially using a lot more of our resources, including potential backflow. Uh, concerns, so I'm just wondering, do we attach? Changes with this, if, if the city changes the use of that originally developed property, do we have any follow through with the city to ensure? That we're recapturing the costs to our infrastructure that that causes?
Um, I think the initial part of your question was, yes, we do do a, a calculation and analysis, uh, based on their proposed use. And we do that for homes as well as, uh, commercials, commercial properties. And we look at their fire flows and we, um, and their water meters are sized accordingly. Um, in terms of someone operating, uh, uh, like a restaurant or something out of their garage. That would. Be more in, in the responsibility of code enforcement for the city.
Well, I know that they would be, according to the city code, they would be able to license that, so my question is, should we look into? The potential of needing to have an M S W D fee like added to the said licenses. Provided by the city so that we recoup the additional costs that we aren't getting for those businesses. Or is there no legal, maybe it's a legal issue that we wouldn't be?
Let me maybe clarify this, so. Before we had our Neptune meters, we simply read the meters every thirty days. Now that we have the ability to do A M I, and we get more data from that. We do have the ability to look on fifteen minute windows, how much usage, and is it exceeding? The manufacturer's suggested size for a meter, so we now have the data to do those types of. Do that research and see, and if we do see something like that, then we can go out and reach out to that homeowner and go toward whatever owner it is. And go through that process, we haven't had a chance to analyze that data for that purpose. But we were still going through the migration of the new meters, and then we have it, and then that's one of the next steps is now analyzing that.
I guess, yeah, I'm asking if staff, I think it's great, I'm just asking that if we can, because we have such a deficit in our development. Costs reimbursement to the district, is this another area that we are potentially missing being properly reimbursed? For changes to the infrastructure, et cetera.
Typically, when a developer comes in and changes the use dramatically. It's an easy decision, hey, you're not getting enough pressure in an upstairs bathroom, or a rear bathroom, or a kitchen, or something like that, and they do, and that's an easy one. But there are situations where something happens that we may not be aware of, or the use is so dramatic and it just wasn't expected. Sometimes we'll go into and have like a storefront that may just be selling, I don't know, cell phones or something like that, but then a beauticians. Goes in there, completely different use, and that meter may be undersized, and that's where the new meters will help us through that, but we do check that. Laundry mat's a perfect example, when a laundry mat comes in, we know there's going to be a large change in consumption, and we do go through that process on an individual basis.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that, um, I only have a couple more, sorry for, for monopolizing this, um. In section four point oh seven, I believe we need to update the cable telephone and internet providers. Um, Frontier is listed as telephone spectrum is cabled, and it's three now, Frontier Spectrum and Race Communications, and they all offer. The three. And then on five point oh two, number twenty-six and number twenty-eight. Talking about the meters and landscape meters, is this sufficient to meet the potential, uh, impending rules for separate? Meters on all new developments from landscaping and irrigation?
What was that section again?
Five point oh two, number twenty-six and number twenty-eight.
So for your landscape meters, the developer will install landscape lateral, uh, you have landscape lateral meter box and backflow device, but not the meter. M S W D will install the meter after meter fees have been paid. Uh, meters will be logged off until the backflow device has been installed, tested, and certified, so that's twenty-six, and you said twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight?
Just twenty-six and twenty-eight talked about the two different types of meters, and I just wanted to make sure that we were preparing ourselves for the impending. Uh, change to the develop, the developers having to have the two different meters.
I believe they were, I believe we're doing, uh, it, separate meters already.
Perfect, and then, um, the last one that was concerning to me in the handbook. Was regarding the job site maintenance, and I, I looked through all of the sections. And none of them talked about any of the storm water pollution prevention plans that are required by the state. Do we leave that up to the city to put into the developer's handbook? As a water company, I would feel much more comfortable if we included the state's requirements. As far as protecting our aquifers, so I was just wondering if there was a reason it was omitted, or if I'm missing the section in which it discusses that.
Wow.
Eric, I can answer this one pretty.
All right, thank you, sir.
That is a city function, they, the, the, the stormwater permits do come through the city. It's their code enforcement that goes check that, unless, of course, like the wastewater plant where we are actually the developer in that case, then it would be our responsibility. But ultimately, the city is the responsible party, as the, we talked about M S four is the title of that permit. So it would be a city function and not necessarily.
Is there any way we can mention the mandatory, uh, following of? The, the city's storm water plan and prevention, pollution prevention plan? At least have it in the job maintenance part, because it says there's all these other things they have to abide by, can we include a simple sentence that they must also provide by? All current storm water pollution prevention plans provided by the state of California and the city.
Absolutely, because not only is it the city, but there's a lot of different jurisdictions that we, we overlap with. So we could add something about that, and it makes sense, because people do, when they think of water, they think of us, it should be in our developer handbook. That it's not necessarily us, but they still have to abide by those rules, so we could add that provision in.
And then the very last thing I have is in the drawings. And it's, um, section three point oh nine, and it's. And it's um section three point O nine and it's it's the manhole covers. I don't think you need to look at it. But I get a lot of complaints from a city council member as well as from several. Neighbors about the the pop, the. The manhole covers not being flushed with the road and causing a lot of driving problems. I want to make sure that the pictures and images provided are with the most current. I'm just like reiterating this. These are the most current. State guidelines that are required. These are what we are required to require. We didn't make them up. This is standard requirement, correct?
The best way to answer that is that we have experienced that, especially when they were paving on Palm and we did review. Not only our standard drawings, but other standard drawings in the Coachella Valley, other water districts, and they are within those same parameters as the other water districts. So we're not doing anything different than anyone else. Um and a lot of that is just from a historical perspective that pavement settles differently. So we try to try to accommodate that when that comes in, so.
Perfect. And and when those those types of things happen like repaving and and. Who is responsible for ensuring that these originals? Drawings are still met. Is it whoever was in charge of that project? Do we still have to go back out and inspect and sign off? How does that?
Yes, yes, we we have inspection. Not only just, not only in-house, but we have uh consulting and inspection. And uh we have uh these drawings stand, these standard drawings that are in our vehicles and we refer to them. I know I refer to them when I go out and field myself. Um and they are if. I would say about a year ago, we went out and took a look at a development uh west of here. And they were wrong. The concrete colors around the water valves were wrong. And so they had to jack them out and replace them at the correct elevation. Um so yes, we do have uh oversight.
Great work, guys. Thank you very much. That's it. Sorry.
I will not be as long. But I just wanna uh I I just have to um. I comment on something she said that you, Eric, you said uh we are installing separate meters for both uh. The house and landscaping for residential now?
I believe we are.
Not for residential.
Not? Oh, so then it's just for commercial?
Just for commercial.
Okay, so um is that something that we can require? Given what's coming down the pike?
We can, but I don't believe it would be, it would be considered industry practice right now, but we can obviously continue to.
We have to be a follower?
The issue, no, I don't know. Believe me, we try not to be a follower here at Mission Springs Water District. The issue that may come up is that we're now requiring two different deposits for a connection fee and then two different meters. And then the the base charge goes with that. So there'd be a lot of extra cost that no one has been. Apprised of, and we would have to go through that process, but it's something we could definitely do.
But I I mean, if you if you make it the standard, then they are apprised from that point forward.
Correct.
Versus having to go on retrofit and given. The conservation as a way of life standards where they're actually asking for separate meters, certainly for industrial. And business, uh it might in fact assist us, I think, in the long term. In terms of what our requirements are to meet those goals. You can, I'll let you be the judge of that, but that would be something that I would seriously consider. Um just two other things. One. I did not see anything, but I didn't. You know, I didn't go through it with a fine tooth comb, maybe a wide tooth, but not a fine tooth like Director Duff. But. Um is there any requirements in there that would need to be added in case? In terms of like connections and such for um ADUs, if you build an ADU at the time that you build a new. A a a new, a new residential place, since that's, that is probably going to be something that we're going to see more and more of. Um is there anything that would need to be changed or added uh in order to accommodate that? Uh ke- keep in mind that once you you have separate connections. They are talking about you can actually sell that subdivide and sell that as a separate property now. So is there anything that would need to be addressed regarding that?
There may be in the future. Currently, we are working with the other utilities because they have similar concerns about if they are subdivided and things of that nature. How do we handle one single service? So that's something that we continue to work with the other utilities. Right now, it hasn't become an issue where they can subdivide that, but we realize they're changing the regulations to allow.
Yeah, they can't subdivide if it's one single utility, if it's separate. And that you can't subdivide if it's. Already existing and it's on one thing, but if it's separate. So I think you may see in the future developers coming in. And doing separate connections, knowing that they can potentially sell those, so.
And in those case, though, we've, we've actually been in City Hall when that's, those questions are being asked and. That is exactly it. If they, if they do put two services in, then they'll do two services for everybody, us, get natural gas.
Right.
And then they.
So nothing would need to be added or changed?
No, nothing would be have to be added.
Okay, and then the only thing I have is on is uh page nineteen, one point zero four. And it's just a question. Um and regarding the project, says currently it's at five hundred or more homes. Um are we aware of any plans to reduce that amount to qualify, given the water issues that we face?
That's actually a Senate bill that that enacted the the water vulnerability assessment studies. And that's language right from that regulation.
Okay, so it is at five hundred. We're not aware of any.
Correct, correct.
That's it.
How can I follow those two? No, I have nothing.
Director Meyer.
Be honest that. People I went to, some of the students I went to school with. When it comes to landscaping. They say Theodore, just stay away from it. They don't know what they're doing. And. To be quite honest. I've expressed my feelings. About landscaping there, as you all know. The heat islands, what should be done? The spider lines going everywhere in a. I took a photo of the apartment complex. There was over a hundred spider lines with nothing there and there would be never running. And around the corner, there was more spider lines I didn't bother to count. So all these spider lines going everywhere, uh weren't really not doing our job as far as water wise gardening. The issue with the. Developers, I've been to brand new houses that were for sale. And in the backyard, it was just plain. There was nothing there. And that's okay. In the front yard. I think the developer and. Well, I'd be somebody that's flipping houses years ago and said, we'll just leave it to the uh the homeowner. Now, once I buy a house. It's my. House and I could plant whatever I want there. If I want to heat iron, if I want all organic matter. So. This whole landscaping thing is is just. Kind of a mess as far as I'm concerned. And even what we do here as a district. Isn't really. If if I went out there, when was the land, when was the irrigation replaced out? In in our garden here between to the west of us. Years ago, hasn't been replaced?
I I don't see any plants that are failing to get water, so.
Okay, well, that's good. But are they being watered properly with the latest irrigation and the and the uh valves?
I think we're getting a little off.
The item is irrigation, the item is the standards for landscaping. So you're right. Anyways. You know, do whatever you want. I'm on the engineering committee and I asked to be a part of this. I asked for the a while back. Nobody asked me. We know here the board. Since two thousand nine, from my understanding, whoever's been assigned to the engineering committee has never. Met with the engineering committee. I've been here a year, never had a meeting with him. So I guess the consensus is. Nobody's interested in my educated opinion and my experience. So do whatever you like with this. That's all I'm going to say.
I just had uh. Kind of a overview question of. I I definitely like that the materials list and other parts of this is going to be more of a living document and constantly updated. Um but I see that it wasn't updated since two thousand twelve. Is that something? Is the opinion of staff that we should be doing more frequently? Revisiting?
It, the last time it was updated, I believe, was back in twenty twelve. And um. Since then, uh staff has gone through and cleaned it up. I just want to make sure you notice though, in the um approved materials list. You'll see the uh. The item as well as the manufacturer. And then you, on the right hand side, you'll see uh serial number or model number. Uh there are some blanks in that space because serial numbers and and model numbers change on a frequent basis by manufacturers. Um so that's why they're they're left blank, but. When a developer comes in and he gives us their materials list or say pipes or fittings or things like that. Uh they give it to us with their cut sheets. We look at it, we reference our uh materials list. And then we make sure, uh and then we go on the website and make sure that um. The the serial numbers that they call out. Are meet our standards, meet what we need. And we also interface and coordinate. Um with construction and maintenance to make sure that if they're going to be the end user. If we ever have a question, we ask them as well to make sure that what we're installed, what is being installed is something that they can maintain.
Right. But also to to elaborate on that response, yes, we we're going to try to update. We're not going to wait ten years to review this. And we will make changes as Eric was talking about specifically the materials list and things like that as required. Uh but if there are other small revisions, we'll just simply make those and just make those, bring those divisions, revisions to the board. But hopefully the whole document, uh if it does have to come back to you, it may be, we'll try to make it every five years to make it a little bit more consistent. Because that seems to be industry practice.
Okay.
Great, thank you. And um do we have uh, I'll open this for public comment. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address on this item?
President Sewell, there are no members of the public online.
Alright, thank you. Item nine, contract amendments for construction and construction support and inspection services for the well forty two project. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to execute contract amendments with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated. Envirologic Resources Incorporated and TKE Engineering Incorporated for additional engineering services during construction. And with roll apart buildings incorporated for additional construction report, support. And inspection services during the construction of the well forty two project in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and five dollars.
President, well, before I give it to our engineering manager, I just wanted to let everyone know that there were some documents, specifically some scope and fees. Related to the amendments that were not in the board packet. We have handed those out. Uh yes, and put them on the dais. We also have copies for any public members that are here, but there's no public. But they will be included in the packet that goes out for Tuesday's meeting. So just wanted to make sure that. Uh you were aware that there was some additional information that we've provided and also. Before it is mentioned, there is a typo on the fourth amendment that we will also be fixing before the next meeting. So with that, Eric, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Good afternoon, President Martin. Um good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item nine in your agenda packet pertains to the contract amendment. For the construction uh and construction support and inspection services for the world forty two project. So in late twenty twenty. The well forty two project was awarded to Lane Christensen Company. Between that time and the early fall of twenty twenty one, construction progressed. And following the well testing, uh MSWD discovered that reducing the pump horsepower. Whilst um. Will will still meet the needs. In the twelve forty and fourteen hundred pressure zones. And the district could receive or could see some operational savings by reducing that pump horsepower. So secondly, MSWD elected to modify the well lubrication system from oil to water. As a result of state water board department of drinking water regulations to increase the pump service life. Now, these changes to the project scope and the turn and the term, uh this is necessitate the contract amendments. With the consultants that are on the project team. So amendments to the consultants are for TKE engineering. To increase uh to accommodate their extra uh construction and management and site inspection. Same thing with AECOM, construction management, design, and as a result of changing the pump. Uh there was some modifications to the electrical uh system that also needed to be reviewed and processed. Uh roll apart buildings. Uh for the storage of a prefabricated onsite building. As well as Envirologic for additional onsite uh supervision of the hydrogeologic inspection and supervisory services. So all total, the increase to the project is a hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred dollars. And so those are for amendments as well as a change order. Due to the changes in the project scope brought about by the district. The construction management and engineering and design contracts require that the amendments and change orders uh be executed to continue work. The cost increases have been included in the mid-year budget adjustment. Construction is anticipated to restart within the next several weeks. And we'll cl- and we'll be close to being complete by the end of June twenty twenty four. Are there any questions?
Let me just add to that report. Uh in reality, the biggest driver for the extension of this contract. Was the electrical items and the motor because of supply chain issues and not being able to. Get the materials that we needed to move this project forward in a more timely manner. So because of that, it pushed everything out. One of the things you'll see in the document is that we had to pay a rental fee for the rollout document. We got the building. But we didn't want to put the building over the well because we didn't have the pump yet. If we would have set the building, we would have to break it apart potentially, and then we had some other issues. So in reality, the supply chain issues is really the. The driving force behind all these extensions. Uh there are a couple of things that I was not aware of until I saw this document that we were, that we. Could have had it delivered and probably wrapped and put in at the corporate yard to save us some money, but um. It wasn't brought to us at that point. So from that perspective, uh we do do, staff does need to do a better job when some of these smaller items are. Delayed because we weren't aware of them, but um now that we're aware of them, obviously we won't make that mistake again. But again, most of these were driven by. Supply chain issues and that pump not being delivered at a time.
Thank you. Uh any questions, Director Martin? Director. Director Duh?
Um, just a couple, actually. This is the fifth. Were the four amendments prior between September twenty one and today. Of September of twenty twenty one and today.
Many of them were simply time extensions. But you did catch on the distinguishing between a fifth, a third and a fourth. Some of them did have dollar amounts associated with them when we were looking at. When we first drilled this well for AECOM, for example, why it's number four, not number three. That one, we, when we actually did the pump test, we got a number. When we did the drilled the well and did another pump test, we got a bigger number. And that's why we had to do a redesign of the electrical system to talk about getting a larger horse pump in there and a bigger pump that could. Because we weren't going to just. Set it at the same level that we received when we did the test pumping with the smaller original pilot well. So from that perspective, that's sort of distinguishes the different amendments and why they're there, but we will bring all amendments to you on Tuesday.
Okay, and then lastly, which of these, I think, five contractors is the one responsible for procuring? Procuring the well motor pump assembly and MCC equipment? Because in the general manager's report that I know we'll talk about later, it talked about this specific well and it said. That we were, that that there was a contractor responsible for procuring the well motor, the pump assembly and the MCC equipment. That was going to be brought to us hopefully in February. I'm just wondering of these five contractors, which is the one responsible for procuring those things?
That's, I believe that's Lane Christiansen, the contractor.
Lane Christiansen, okay, thank you. That's it.
Vice President Griffin?
Okay, I have quite a number. All related to. TKE. So I read this letter and I have some, I have a couple of concerns and I'm hoping someone can answer these for me, okay? And when you read this letter, it talks about them doing things that are out of the scope of service. And I wanted to know, is. This done without approval or is it ju- you know, and then we come back? Or did someone say, yeah, go ahead and do these things? Um because if the contract is for a scope of service, and I know there's such a thing as scope creep. Um, I I think that's something we're gonna need to be aware of, so I'm kind of curious as to who gave the okay for them to do these additional things that were not within the scope of the original contract.
It wasn't in the original scope of the contract to change the uh. Pump motor horsepower. So in going over the revisions to the electrical system. Um. T K E being the uh C M and inspection on this. Uh, uh. What was authorized to continue work on that and to continue having meetings on scheduling and trying to. Um, uh, get this, get this equipment purchased through this. Um. Equipment shortage that was happening.
Okay, so.
Go ahead.
When we talk about the meetings, um. My understanding is this, this was placed on hold, correct?
It was, but there was still, we still needed to procure the, the, the contractor still needed to procure the new equipment. And there was some scheduling um issues and some difficulties in that. And so they're adding to the budget specifically. Due to the delays in changing the pump horsepower.
I, 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 I understand that aspect, but I'm reading their letter. And so I see here bi-weekly meeting, so if a project is on hold, what is the purpose of a bi-weekly meeting?
The bi-weekly meeting was simply done just to make sure, have you called the pump manufacturer and made sure that it's moving forward or going through?
And so I had asked for a list of the billable hours for this project for them. Which I did not get because I want to know how much am I being charged for a phone call? How much am I, I being charged for an email, I don't, I, I haven't, I have an issue with being charged thirty-eight thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars a month on it, on a project. That is dormant. Um. Other question, so you go through this and it's, I get preparation, um. Reviewing and processing progress payments and invoices. Is it standard for them to do all the invoices for every project that they're involved in?
They were the construction manager on this project, so yes, in that particular case, they are responsible to review everything we received from the contractor before we approve it.
And since they were onsite, they could validate. Stuff uh, materials that were either uh constructed and placed. Or uh installed in the well. And they have their uh inspection logs to uh.
Responding request for information, I requested billable hours, I got nothing, so is is that indicative of what they did during that time period?
No, I, I believe, I'm looking at my emails right now, and I apologize, I believe I did receive that from Steve and I just did not print it out for today's meeting.
Okay, can, can I have a copy of that before?
Yes, yes.
Um. That's all for now.
Any other? Any other questions, discussion? Thank you, Eric. And we'll open public comment, Dory, are we still without uh public?
That is correct.
Close the public comment on item nine. Item ten, purchase of utility easement for the regional water reclamation facility. Monitoring well on A P N six six nine dash one one zero dash zero zero one. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to take the necessary actions to negotiate, purchase and record a permanent utility easement on a portion of real property. In Riverside County, A P N. Six six nine dash one one zero dash zero zero one for a monitoring well. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell, I will hand this again to Eric Wecker, engineering manager.
Thank you, sir, good afternoon. President Sewell and members of the board. Uh, item ten in your agenda packet pertains to the purchase of a utility easement for a monitoring well located near the Nancy Wright. Regional wastewater reclamation facility. Coupled with the construction of the Nancy Wright Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility. California Regional Water Quality Control Board. Colorado River Basin Region. Uh, the district was required to install. A monitoring well network. To monitor fluctuations in groundwater quality. To date. The district has had two wells out of the three. Two of them have been constructed and placed. Uh, the third well is located down gradient of the Nancy Wright Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility on private property. Staff has been in communication with the property owner. And has retained a real property agent to perform an appraisal of the necessary easement. The property owner agrees to the terms of the of the appraisal. The easement is necessary to allow access to construct. Maintain and take the necessary samples from the well, which are required by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Capital Realty Analyst. Determine that the fair market value of the ten thousand seven hundred square foot easement. Is two thousand dollars. Uh, are there any questions?
Director Martin? Director Martin? Director Duff?
I just wanted to ask. Great work, I know that you guys have been struggling to get the owner's permission, but is this the last one now? This is the last one, fantastic, thank you, great work.
Vice President Griffin?
I know.
I have nothing further, thank you very much, Eric. And we'll open public comment. Again, uh, no public?
Correct.
Item eleven, award of contract for the complete de- deployment of the Arc G I S Enterprise Utility Network and City Works to Timmins Group. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to execute a contract agreement for the complete deployment. Of the Arc G I S Enterprise Utility Network and City Works in the amount of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars plus a ten percent contingency. For a total of. Nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars to Timmins Group. And authorize the general manager to do all things necessary to complete the project.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell, I will ask uh. Excuse me, our director of fi- finance, Arturo Sayha, to give this presentation.
Uh, thank you, General Manager Macy, President Sewell and members of the board. As we continue to make the improvements that uh we've outlined in the strategic plan. Uh, and improvements to help our staff uh make decisions on timely and 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 uh. With more accuracy, this is one of those projects that we've been talking about for a while, ever since uh general manager Macy started with the district. Uh, and even a little bit before that. Um, on Tuesday, you had a presentation of the uh water and sewer master plan. And as much as I applaud the work that was done by staff, engineering, um. There, those are estimates in the terms of what information you're being presented. However, there is an opportunity to provide you with more accurate information. Uh, with that comes an R G I S system, uh, utility uh so um network and city works. Uh, which is being presented, uh, keep in mind, I know that when you see the price, uh, it's a sticker shock, uh, it is so, uh, twenty-eight month. Uh, project, it is not a one year project, it is twenty-eight months that it gets spread. Uh, it, it is composed of three phases, the first page, this obviously is a R G I S uh process. Which is basically locating items in the district's uh map. Uh, we want staff to be able to uh respond to a line break immediately on the spot. Uh, and not have to be searching for it as often happens right now. Um, so that's the, the first part of it is location of all of these items, including. Um, looking at the inventory for that particular uh valve that needs to be replaced. Uh, right now, staff might have an idea of what's underground and they bring all these supplies that they uh, they can think of. Only to find out that it was not what they needed to fix that particular valve or break. Uh, they'll be able to precisely know what's down there in that area and where to locate it and also pick a, a, a uh. Kit uh of the inventory that will provide them that ability to be able to fix that without uh back and forth. Uh, the second part is a database, we need to uh a place to store all of that information. Uh, and be able to use that information, not necessarily for construction and maintenance, but for everything else, as you know. Uh, from a time card to a safety vest to um, you name it, it's all gonna be part of this process. Uh, in order to mobilize the entire district in a, in a more unified way uh to make decisions as to what we need and what we're using uh in the field. Uh, and how it affects other staff, for example, um, we can start a project um and not realize what side of the district it is. Well, with the location, we can actually call someone who's near that area to be able to respond faster. Or if a project is not complete, uh, we can now have a follow-through the next day saying. Uh, this uh project is not complete, we need to send someone else out there to finish this project and respond to customers accordingly. Um, and finally, we need the interface in order to make that happen and work for us. Uh, to come, to combine everything all at once. Uh, this is going to be a cloud service uh that we're gonna be able to access and not necessarily be tied to the computers in the office. As you know, a lot of the times, that's a problem when we have rain, everything goes haywire. Um, within the district is in, within our offices. Um, we need the ability to be able to respond to our customers. Uh, without those limitations, and that's where that comes in. Uh, we did an analysis of the four proposals that were submitted. Uh, we looked at everything uh that we requested and by far, Timmins was the company that stood out. Uh, to those that uh reviewed their proposals. Um, and that is why we're recommending them, uh, not only because of the proposal, but also the uh references that we called and reviewed. Uh, it, they stood out in the ability that they provided these agencies uh to be able to get these projects going. Uh, to the point where in included in the contract amount is staffing um abilities. Uh, we do not have a G I S person in-house right now, we, that position has been put out to uh for uh. To hire a person, uh, however, they are going to be able to supplement the district with twenty hours a week. Uh, until we get someone in-house who can take over uh to get that project going, and as you know, a lot of it is. We do have a database right now, uh, that database might not be compatible with what we move into. Uh, they're gonna have to clean all of that data, put it all into perspective and then change it and uh modify it as needed. Uh, and one of the easy things for us is that we don't have a lot of things out there right in a database. Uh, that we're basically gonna be able to start from scratch with some of these things. Uh, that makes it easier for us to work with someone like Timmins uh to provide that to us. Um, and if there's no other questions, I would like to introduce uh Ron Butcher and uh Mike Wiley. Uh, with Timmins to provide you a uh quick presentation about the uh, the project.
I'll start first and then Mike will just jump in wherever I miss something. Uh. Good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board, uh, thank you for consideration of the Timmins Group team. Uh, for the complete deployment of the R G S Enterprise Utility Network at City Works Project. Um. The project is multifaceted and and let me go through, are we able to uh present a uh? A presentation? If I share my. If I share my screen?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, cool. All right, I'm, can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
All right, that makes it easy. All right. So the facets of the project, you know, there's really four major facets of this project, it's a design and implementation of enterprise G I S technology. The design and implementation of enterprise asset management, which is uh City Works uh made by Trimble. Design and implementation of cloud, which is basically where you're gonna be storing the information up in in. The cloud, uh, implementation of a data model, which is called the utility network now. My expertise is on the asset management side, Mike Wiley here, his expertise is on the Esri and the utility network, so. Between the, the bu- the two of us, we should be able to answer any of your questions. Um, as you can see, there's a number of different uh phases that go into this project, the first one is just to get your deployment. Your uh cloud deployment up and running uh in A W S. Uh, that's where you're gonna be storing and working with the information. Uh, then taking, like you were saying, the land-based data and importing it up into that environment. Uh, and then also migrating that over to the Esri's utility network. And I'm gonna talk about a couple of people on our team uh that actually specialize in these areas. Um, then you got the City Works A M S installation, and that's your asset management, that's. Basically the software that's gonna be going through and managing and monitoring the work activity against all your assets. As well as the costs associated. And then finally, uh, as was stated, the, the staff augmentation part. Um. All five of these could be almost independent projects, the, the fact that you brought them together into one solution. Um, we see is uh definitely something where you're definitely gonna see a lot of cost savings across the board. Um, by doing it this way, and like I said, we're looking at. Twenty-eight months, uh, we're hoping underneath that uh to get this complete project completed from start. Uh, you may not know who Timmins Group is, uh, we're actually uh East Coast company, engineering company based out of Richmond, Virginia. Um, over a thousand people um on what we call geospatial technology, which is the people that are focused on this pro. Project as well as our engineering side. Um, we've been serving government, government and private industry for over seventy years, and this is across the United States. Um, we have over two hundred people focused specifically on the Esri G I S side. The asset management side. And then we're also multiple award-winning uh in the Esri Business Partner uh. Arena and gold level on that. Um. On the City Works side, uh, we're what's called a platinum implementation partner, um. That is the top level you can be within their program. And then we're also aligned with a number of other companies that bring a lot of value to this. Um, so what we're, what we're looking at is, is the team we've put together for this, I think, cover all the. The facets of this project better than I think just about, well. Just any, pretty much any co- uh company that's out there. Uh, real quick about me, um, I've been doing this for well over twenty-seven years, uh, currently out of Richmond, Virginia. Uh, I, I spent many years uh living in Redlands, so definitely uh well aware of your area. And also the, the conditions you face, especially when it comes to water. Um. Focus has pretty much been on strategic consulting. Uh, across the U S, United States and in Asia, so. That's, I'll, I'm gonna be the principal in charge, just making sure that. You know, at the end of the day, that the buck, the buck stops with me. With that, uh, is Lauren Sullivan, who would be the project manager on this job. Once again, uh, tons of experience, she's actually uh originates out of San Diego, she lives up in Portland, Oregon now. Um. And she's been working both on the City Works side as well as the Esri side and working. Closely with Ally Kennedy and a lot of the U N. Utility network projects that we're been, we've been working on over the last. Couple of years. And finally, we have Ally Kennedy, uh, who are, is our U N lead. Um, this is a very specialized area, there's very, very few people that are certified in this area. Uh, she's been doing this for, you know, going on eight years, she has a ton of U N. Um, experience across the United States, which we'll show in a little bit. Um, but uh definitely she's gonna be a major focal when it comes to that area of the project. When it comes to the City Works side of things, which is the area I govern. Uh, we've been doing this for over twenty years, uh, as you can see, we've implemented over a hundred and forty across the United States and also in Canada. And as you can see, also a number of projects down in Southern California. On the U N project side. We, we've, we have a number of U N projects across the United States, including down in Southern California region. Along with a number of Esri uh projects across the United States, so like I said, we're, we're, we're basically bringing these two major technologies together. Uh, and we, with, with a lot of experience going into that. That was quick, so. Any questions?
Well, thank you for the presentation, do we have uh questions, Director Duff?
Uh, just one, at our workshop recently, we were discussing um our. New I T company. And all the protections with this now going cloud-based, are they going to be able to work closely? With them to protect us from those potential breaches that we would have?
Um, yes, definitely, I mean, the, the uh. The area we're looking at, you know, Amazon Cloud Services, this is a known commodity out there. You know, major businesses, financial institutes are, are using this, will be able easily sync this in with, with your other uh. The other company that you have out there, Mike, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, we go through, uh, we basically go through a full technical architecture uh review, and we don't do that by ourselves, so we do it with. You know, folks in I T, and if you've got a, a third-party consultant, security consultant, uh, we definitely welcome their participation in. In. Helping architect the solution as well as uh. Um, making comments on it.
Thank you so much for being here in person to provide the additional presentation and answering my question, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Griffin?
I have, thank you very much for the presentation, I have none for them, I do have one for Arturo. Thank you.
Director Martin? Director Martin?
When you say U N certifications and products, uh, projects, are you referring to the United Nations?
It's a, it's an abbreviation we use for a product, a solution called the utility network. And uh, Arturo did a really good job uh at describing what that was, I'm very impressed.
Um, it it's basically kind of a smart um, smart mapping system, if you will. But yeah, it's just an abbreviation for uh utility network. And we have two staff that are certified on it. And our company itself is certified um on the uh utility network product.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Um. I first heard about this technology when I was going to college and the farmer started using that. It sure has come a long ways.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the leader of the software company is in your backyard. I mean, all this, the software itself is produced by a company in Redlands. So, pretty close to you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And um. I know you mentioned the twenty-eight month uh timeline. Um, I guess once we get it set up, how long do you feel like? The system will last us and will there be ongoing um cost?
Yeah, I I can start Ron on that one. I mean, so the actual implementation is about sixteen, eighteen months. And then we have another year of uh kind of support built in. Um, it's a great question because technology oftentimes doesn't, I shouldn't say doesn't last long, that sounds terrible, but doesn't last for decades. The interesting thing here is that the reason why everyone's going to this utility network is because. Uh, a piece of software is getting deprecated. It's getting sunsetted, if you will. But that software has been used for twenty-three years, I believe. I'm not saying that you'll be able to use the utility network. And all of its related components for twenty-three years, but you might be able to. Its predecessor, the geometric network, was used for for more than two decades. Um, so that you should have long legs on this. Um, Ron also mentioned kind of the cost savings. You know, we're doing a number of these projects across the country. Um, yours is probably the first actually where all of these components are coming into one, right? So, we've done projects where CD Works was already completed and we've done utility network and kind of changed city works. And but this is, this is really everything together. Um, we did kind of a run-up on costs and if you had done these as individual projects, it would have been close to twice the cost. I know. You're currently expressing sticker shock, but um a lot of, a lot of agencies come to us and say, can you break this into? Two or three projects and that has longer-term cost implications, so whoever made that decision. Uh, decided wisely.
Great. Well, I think um, I think it's really nice that we kind of have a fresh slate and um. I know we did mention sticker shock, but I think over time it's gonna help our staff so much and save a lot of staff hours and. I think it's gonna be a a big cost savings to to the district. Um, Vice President Griffin, you have a question for Arturo?
Yeah, just it, so this is the implementation. Are there gonna be ongoing costs down the road in terms of? Whether it's support or updates or things of that nature and and. I I didn't see that in here. I'm not sure if I missed something or if it wasn't there and and if it's not that, I I wasn't expecting it, but it was like, what? Cause it's always ongoing cost, but just estimate down the road what we're talking after implementation.
So the implementation's running about a year and a half. Uh, we have already included in there. Um, if you see a line item there for managed services, that is support of the cloud and. Cloud infrastructure and the enterprise uh GIS component. So I believe there's a year in there. After the whole system is live. Um, as far as everything else goes, I mean, we oftentimes do enter in various support. Contracts for the year uh on an annual basis and it it's really driven by. What you have, who you have for staff and what their capabilities are.
Thank you.
And the beauty of this is that we leverage any improvements that are made uh on the system itself without having to purchase additional software. All that comes through and our staff will have those changes and improvements immediately after they've made.
And uh, Director Duff?
I have.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, just quickly, Arturo, two things. One, can you just give us a ballpark estimate? Once this is fully um implemented, how many man-hours do you think this is going to save?
The S?
Big ballpark estimate.
The the estimate we were looking at was uh roughly uh within a hundred thousand in terms of uh. Funds and we were looking at all the runaround that stopped us. Uh, including vehicle um and gas and all of that uh initially. Um, and I know that's kind of going to grow as we make the improvements uh from the uh water and sewer master plan. A lot of that information is not readily available to us, but it will be. With the system because we'll know what pipes are failing, we'll know what they're made of and when they need to be replaced and when was the last time? Ten feet of that pipe was replaced versus the entire thing that needs to be changed. So those cost savings are definitely going to come into place. The longer we keep improving the uh the project itself.
Perfect. And then the only other comment was a thank you to the staff who worked on this project. On the, on the grading uh sheet, page one eighty-five, providing the uh errors and mistakes and response. Was excellent for me because there was one recipient that was so different from the others. And my initial question was, why? What made it so different? Um, but by doing this, I think the transparency and the reason why the staff is providing their recommendation is so wonderful for the public to see. And I just wanted to say thank you for that addition in this process.
Thank you.
Uh, Director Meyer, have you got a question?
Yes, uh Director Duff had basically the same question I had, but what you're saying here is I'm gonna be saving a hundred thousand a year. So it's gonna take ten years to get this initial almost million dollars back. And then the recurring cost to keep the system going is going to be how much a year after that?
The uh estimated was fifty thousand initially, uh but again, all of this is going to depend on the data that we uh start adding to it. What other information we are going to be leveraging uh from that. So as the project grows. Uh, and we have someone on in staff to be able to take on that, that we're gonna be able to better give you an answer then. Uh, simply because right now, uh depending on what experience that person comes in with and their ability to make those decisions. Without having to go to someone like Timmons, uh is gonna be very different. Uh, so for now, we have uh allotted one staff member to make those changes. And work with the company. Uh, eventually we see this growing into a one uh two or three uh person department that's going to be again. Implementing all of this for the entire district.
Wow, so it's it's gonna be pretty costly. I understand it. Hopefully, the cost is gonna be worth.
Yeah, and when you consider staff time, you know, one hour of our staff, including benefits. Uh, that they waste going back and forth for something they forgot or something that was uh wrong to be able to fix something. That's a lot of time when you start adding it a lot throughout the entire year. Um, and we're just talking one staff member.
Well, I still may forget.
Yeah, and and that's the beauty of this is that we are able to tell it where we're going and what needs to be done. It's going to remind, you know, the the employee, take this with you. Uh, this is what you're going to need to fix that particular area.
And this will also help our uh employee or staff member over at the uh yard that's in charge of uh.
Inventory.
Inventory there, yes, thank you.
Yes.
So, yeah, it's it's very important that we do this. I'm just. Wish it was at a different time and we had other money coming in for another project already, but. Thank you, and it's very important that we do it.
Director Martin?
Yeah, I, you may have already answered this question. I had to step out for a minute, but to what extent even all does this impact? Um, our procedure would in terms of sending and receiving documents and our email systems and stuff like that. Uh, what did the impact it's gonna have on on that? Can you change the entire system or?
It it does not. It actually improves the system simply because we will not be working with email that's pretty much. Uh, more open than the system we're gonna be implementing. Uh, all of those uh documents. Uh, primarily are gonna be in the type of fillable forms that where the data is extrapolated and then used throughout uh all over different programs. From again, form payroll to work, having a work order management system for the uh for field service staff. Um, to construction and maintenance, uh a replacement of pipe uh timeline and projects and years. Um, it's all going to be integrated into the system. Uh, and one of the things that I love about this is the reminders that it's just, you know, a lot of times. We have this written down and you'll still see staff writing things down on by hand, um where. That that paper gets put away and just, you know, gets lost. Well, we won't have that issue with the, with this type of system. Um, that is going to be able to give us that data without having to send it through an email. Or through any other forms of communication that it's just gonna be there available to our staff.
Okay, thank you.
Anything for it? Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll open public comment. Dory, do we have any members of the public?
No, sir, we don't.
Great, we'll close the public comment. Moving on, item twelve, MSWD Regional Water Reclamation Facility Update.
Thank you, President Sewell. I believe uh we have a representative from TKE, our construction manager, to pres- present this update.
Uh, thank you, General Manager Macy. Uh, this is Terry Renner from TKE, President Sewell, members of the board. I will share my screen. We'll go through the update for the regional water reclamation facility for the month of January. Is that coming through? Okay?
Yes.
Right. Uh, so in the month of January, we've had a continued uh work on the headworks fouling air piping. As you can see in the pictures here, they are getting close to the completion of that uh fouling air piping uh installation. Again, that air piping is uh taking the dirty air from the headworks unit and then pushing it through scrubbers. Trying to clean that so that uh we eliminate some foul orders from coming out of the treatment plant. Um, also in the headworks area, we had the contractor uh install the grit removal system. Uh, all the headworks wire goes through this grit removal system, uh takes out some of the uh the dirt and fines that are in it. Uh, those get washed and then uh dumped into a dumpster which are removed from the site. On the left side, you can see that uh piping from the grit removal system being installed. And then on the right side, uh we've got the electrical unit uh and the control system also being installed. For that grit removal system. Uh, in the SBR air diffuser area, we are continuing uh the installation or the contractors continuing the installation of the air diffuser piping. Which is uh shown on that left screen. They are getting close to the completion of that uh installation as well. And then on the right side, we've just got uh some additional uh mixer supports uh being installed. Uh, where the the supports are holding up the piping that are in the different uh chambers. Uh, continuing along in the SBR tanks, we've got more equipment wiring uh being installed. Uh, there is a a ton of wiring that is going on uh in each one of these tank areas, so. The contractor has a a lot of electrical work that is continually being done. Uh, they also have uh installed the plant three W water reuse pump base and piping. Um, so within this, the. Area itself or it within the treatment plant itself, um, we can reuse the water after it's cleaned. To wash down certain tanks and um, you know, do other certain things uh throughout the uh the plant. So, um, this is that reused water pumping system that's being installed. On the left, you can see the pump bases uh being installed. And then on the right, you can see the uh final product with the pumps. And the the piping that were installed in the plant itself. Uh, also in uh continued work on spreading pond number one, we have been able to uh begin clearing and growing on pond number one. So that work is uh underway now and we did successfully relocate the burrowing owl that was uh in that pond number one area. Um, in pond number two area, we have uh the contractor completing the um outlet pipe diffuser. Uh, on the left side is a zoomed-out picture of that. And then on the right side, you can see the um the water pipe that will um. Diffuse or will push the water out into the uh the pond itself and then the pad there that will diffuse the water before it hits any material. Uh, in the pond area, we have the spreading pond splitter box and weir gate, so they're continuing work on that. We've had pictures. Um, of this area underway in the previous couple of months. And now you can kind of see uh some more of the completed. Uh, project here. So this will have uh water coming from the treatment plant. Uh, after it's been cleaned and then it'll get split uh through these different weers uh into each one of the spraying ponds. Um, along the uh just general areas of the site, we've got some site drainage protection features that are being constructed. And you can see uh some head walls and storm drain pipes for some onsite water. Uh, that will just be um collected and distributed into some of the small basins that are onsite. Um, elsewhere, we also had some general features going in. Now we've got some curb and gutter and some ribbon gutters being installed on the right side there. Um, on the left side, you can see some of the forms that were being placed for curb and gutter uh installation as well as a lot of the. Light bases on uh the left side as well. More general work going on here, so we've got a lot of the aggregate base material uh being placed in some of the general maintenance areas. And just, you know, preparing for the final surface preparation within those areas. Uh, this is the uh main entry gate and they've got the stone pilasters constructed now. Uh, they'll be. Adding the fencing in between those pilasters here to come and then in your future. And on the left side, you can see the uh pre-product being, you know, put together and then the the final stone pilasters on the right side. Uh, they've also installed the uh protection ballards around a lot of the electrical uh transformer equipment. Uh, those are removable ballards that they do need to get into the area. Uh, we could slide them out and then they'll obviously be uh, you know. Installing pavement and other things around that to come. On the right side, we've just got a a close-up of some of the uh light standard bases that uh. Were being installed throughout the facility that we saw in some of the previous pictures. Um, on this picture, when we, we tried to put in a celebratory uh confetti popping here, but this is. The uh motor control centers. Uh, these are the items that we've been waiting eighteen months to get, so um this is. The main reason why the project is a little bit behind schedule, but those have finally arrived. So, uh we've got the uh the arrival there on the left side and then on the right side, uh contractor installation of those motor control centers. Uh, this is a lot of the wiring going on within uh some of the motor control centers and other areas of the building itself. So here we've got uh internal uh office areas of uh the treatment plant. This is the the lab on the left side. Uh, countertop and all the cabinets have been installed and they're just doing uh some of the finished work uh in the room itself. You can also see the T-bar ceiling starting to go in with some of the light fixtures. On the right side, we have uh the control room. We've got all countertops in there as well and cabinets. Uh, they they still have a a little bit of work to do on the T-bar ceiling and some cabinet features in that room. Um, where all the the control system will be. Uh, more, you know, general work within the restrooms. They are uh fabbing out the uh partitions in the restrooms there on the left side. Uh, on the right side, you know, just some more cabinetry work and T-bar ceilings going in the break room. And then onto the conveyance line. So uh in the month of January, the contractor did get the. Um, casing piping and the force main installed across Mission Creek where um. We had the blowout from uh Tropical Storm Hillary. Um, all of that work was completed a couple of days prior to. That most recent storm and the contractor was able to get everything back built and completed prior to that storm getting in. Uh, so he had no major issues um in relation to that storm event. And uh this completes all of the force main work along Dillon Road, so now we're just down to uh the BCP pipe on Little Morongo. Now we're just down to, uh, the BCP pipe on Little Morongo. And here's a couple more pictures, uh, some of that work getting completed, uh, with the casing pipe being closed up. And, uh, the paving in Dillon Road. But on to the, uh, funding and permitting updates. Uh, just as a reminder for phase one, the FBA was, you know, submitted back in, uh, May of twenty-two and has been approved, obviously since we're. Submitting reimbursements on that. A reimbursement request for Q two. We did speak to, uh, the finance department at the state today. And they did confirm that they've, um, approved that and pushed it on to their management for the final approval. Of the nine point three million, um, that's in that one, so. We should be seeing, uh, a check hopefully, uh, pretty shortly here on the Q two. Uh, Q three invoice was also submitted to the state for review for six point six million. And we are in the middle of, um, putting together Q four invoice. And we'll, uh, get that submitted here in the next couple of weeks, so the state will have all of those. Uh, for the WDR special provisions, monitoring well number three, as you talked about earlier, um, in today's meeting. The easement acquisition, um, for that well, uh, was on the agenda for approval. And then, um, also in the same boat, we've got the sampling for the private wells. Uh, we do have the, uh, private well access granted by the property owner, the private property owner. And, um, that access agreement is in progress right now. Uh, our Q four update to the state has been completed and sent to them, so we're, uh, fully up to date on all of those. And then in the phase two conveyance line, the FBA, um. Was submitted back in May of twenty-three. Uh, we have followed up with them, uh, just as of recently. They had a couple of questions related to, uh, DBE. And, uh, prevailing wage rates, which we've provided responses to them, so. That continues to move forward and we should be, uh. We're anxious to get, uh, the approval on that FBA here, uh, shortly. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Director Martin? Director Maya?
What? It would seem that there would be more people. Working here and, and getting this done a little faster, but. What are we, what are we looking at now? I know that when I first came here, was that sometime in January, it was supposed to come online. And from what I'm looking at here, another ninety days.
You're talking about for the treatment plant to come online?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so right now we're looking at, um. Uh, late March i- is the estimated date when we're, uh, gonna be. Uh, bringing the plant online, testing it and commissioning it. So, um, contractor is getting pretty close to, uh, getting all that tied up.
Director Deff?
Um, I'm glad to see that you submitted the quarter three invoicing and are working on the quarter four. Um. And I, I know that we discussed this last month, that, that your reasoning was not wanting to. Muddy the state with multiple invoices, but are you also going to get that, that quarter four? Of twenty twenty-three out in the next, uh, few days here, or when do you expect that to go out and what are you waiting?
Um, not so, that is underway, um. We are putting all of the paperwork together, so there's a lot of paperwork that goes into that. Um, the, the Q three, um, was processed and, and put in. Uh, ahead of schedule, they, they don't like to. Um, the, the state has asked us to not place them. In until the end of the next quarter, but we are not following that anymore and we're. Uh, moving forward with the board's direction and, and getting those in ahead of the state's, uh, requests, so. Um, that next, that, that, uh, Q four invoice or, or. Uh, invoice number four is scheduled to be, uh, in their hands within the next couple of weeks here.
Okay, so I, in what you just said, it's causing me to have to clarify a little bit because in our conversation last month. I asked specifically if you were doing this in the delay of it because the state had required that and we were told no. And that was why the board told you we wanted you to proceed in getting those invoices out right away, so. Is, is that changing now to where the state? Didn't want them and that was the delay, or is it truly be? Can you, I guess, which is it?
No, so the state has asked that they. When we submit one, it would be three months following, so if Q four gets completed. Uh, which would be through the end of December, then their request was that we send it in, in the end of March.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, it's, it's a, it's a request of theirs, it's not their requirement, so. Um, I don't know if maybe that was the confusion there, but. Per board's direction, we are gonna move that forward and submit to the state. In advance of the request, just so that they can have the ability to. Understand the impacts, you know, to Mission Springs Water District on, you know, how much money is, is out there, that, that was. I believe the intent of this, correct?
Yeah, we can't wait with, if they're sending it back every single time, multiple times, we can't. Afford to, to not get that process started immediately if they're not gonna just review and approve. If it's gonna be a back and a forth for five, six months each time we need to get paid, then we have to submit them all immediately.
Yeah.
Start the back and forth process.
Yeah, and that for moving forward, that is our, our process, we're, we're not gonna wait.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Vice President Griffin?
I just gotta, I'm gonna piggyback on that. Did they give you a reason why they want us to wait?
No reason in particular, no. It's just their, their processing method.
Okay. I, I'm still curious, y- you say a couple of weeks, so. Um. End of the quarter, it's tax time, I have to wait for my tax, my ten ninety-nines, because I own too many stocks. But I always get them by the fifteenth, so I have over a hundred and twenty stocks and I get. Ten ninety-nine for all of those by the fifteenth, so how, uh. How long does it take you to actually compile, get everybody's invoices in and then compile them, review them, and then get that all submitted?
Uh, normally it takes about three to four weeks to get everything in from all the different. Uh, contractors, all the different subcontractors, um. The consultants that are all a, a part of it, and then there's also, um, district staff time that comes into play as well.
At what point does district staff time, after everything is? Uh, so you get it, you review it, you send it to us and then we send it back for processing to the state, is that, is that the? Process? I'm trying to understand.
Uh, some of the information has to come from the district. Uh, we don't have the access to it, so. Uh, we coordinate with district staff to get all of the different information from, um, everybody that's involved on the project. Accumulated, uh, and put together. Uh, the district reviews it and sends it to us for our final review and then we submit to the state.
Okay, thank you for that, so now I'm gonna go after our general manager and say, so what is our process for getting this information to them? And how long is it taking us?
Artur, you can step in, but, um, so there's a lot to this and not only do we have to wait until the. The month of December ends and then we get an invoice, so let's say the fifteenth or this end of Ju- January. When we get all of that, then we need to make sure that all the labor compliance things are taken care of and all those things, and then we issue a check. That's the other part of this, we have to issue a check, but we also have our own hours that we can then ask for reimbursement as well, so. Some of the staff time is putting all of those things together. Did I leave anything out, Artur?
Uh, no, but truly the delay isn't getting those invoices timed in.
And, and so do we not, we not have an expectation that we should be receiving invoices within thirty days of the end of the month?
We do have that expectation, but we don't get all of them. And sometimes if we don't know they are out there, in this particular project, they should be all going through TKE because there's not that much on our side. We do have a couple of fr- from manpower because we have subbed some of those. Some of that out, but that would be the only one I can think of that would be outside of TKEs and the construction management team.
Uh, correct, and even though we get those invoices, let's say two months later, we still have to call them to the month where the work was completed. Uh, and show that we paid them so that we can get reimbursed. It is a reimbursement grant. Um, and be, and for that reason, we have to wait until everything is processed.
So we can't do a retro, in other words, we couldn't process, this is what we have here, blah, blah, blah. And then if they come in two months late, then they just have to wait a little longer for the next quarterly, uh, update, I mean, as I. I'm looking at it from the perspective of, if you're not gonna get your stuff into us, then you gotta wait to get paid and maybe there's a little bit of, uh. Twisting that might get them to move a little faster, can we do that? Will the state allow us to do that?
That I don't know, uh, however, accounting rules do not allow us to do that for the simple reason of the allocation process. We have to allocate the costs of a project, uh, during the month that the, the work was completed. So in that sense, we have to follow those accounting rules. Uh, and if there, if the state will allow us to do that, we can, uh, simply because we pay it later and then show it in a different month. As long as they are aware of that process, then I don't see why we couldn't.
And that could explain the three-month delay and why they want us to wait to make sure that we have everything pulled together, so their books are accurate when we get audited, but that's just.
Okay, I, I would like for us to at least do what we can to get these invoices in as soon as possible. Um, because it, it holds everything else up, and from my perspective. If you're running your business appropriately, there's no reason that you should have your invoices coming out two and three months later. Get them out, get paid.
Anything further? No, thank you very much. Item thirteen. Item thirteen, Critical Service Center and Administrative Building Update.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell, we have a representative from Clark here that will be giving this presentation. Alvin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board and, uh, district staff. Uh, so today's update will be, uh, just a quick update, uh, over the highlights, uh, from our meeting. Uh, with the city of Desert, uh, Hot Springs, uh, we had a pre-planning discussion with the city and, um. They had about five or six representatives from their staff, uh, there as well, so, uh, it was a very productive meeting, able to. Uh, present this project, um, at a conceptual level to them and, um. It was very well received, so the city was very supportive of the new project, um. Uh, they had a lot of good comments about how well it connects within, uh, the city connectivity plans. Uh, they made references to the library, uh, some of the county service buildings, the school and park. And how they feel that this, uh, location works very well in terms of tying into. A lot of those aspects that are there or, uh, there's even some future developments that they're looking at that they feel that this, uh, project would tie into. Uh, another aspect was, uh, they supported, uh, a strong connection of the new critical service facility with the adjacent park. So as we were doing our conceptual planning, we knew that there was gonna be a line, uh, there that, uh, we wanted to see if it. Uh, if there was a way to make a stronger connection, so currently there's a, a small block wall there, for instance, so if the city wanted to keep that wall, then. There would be, uh, a strong delineation between the two sites, but, uh, we'll work with the city on. Uh, making that a much softer or, uh, more of a blended transition and it. Based on discussions with the city, it looks like they're very amenable to that. Uh, they also noted that the architecture and design, uh, fits in with the current and future development, so that was good to hear as well. And then, uh, beyond that, we also discussed a lot of the, uh, city submittal requirements. So one of the key points that we took out, uh, took away from it was, uh, in our discussion for the seque strategy. So any kind of environmental impact, uh, so, uh. The discussions with the city, uh, was able, we were able to find a way if the developed area was gonna be less than five acres. Uh, that this could be considered an infill project and those actually be exempt from having to submit initial study, uh, to the city for their review. Uh, this is really good news in the sense that, um. It will take at least thirty days to review, uh, that study if, if it was required, so that's thirty days we're able to save off the schedule. Um, we also met with the environmental consultant today, just today, and, uh. We're game planning, uh, what it would take in order to, uh, we're looking at. Submitting an infill exemption to the city, uh, what that looks like, we're not a hundred percent sure yet if that'll be a memo, if it'll be a full report. Uh, so we actually just scheduled a meeting with them, uh, next week, so we'll have, uh, better clarity as to. Uh, how to get that exemption in, so that way that gets locked in as well and that understanding is, um, is dialed in. And the city also provided, uh, sample documents, uh, for, uh, representing, uh. Some of the submittals that they've seen in the past that they, uh, thought were very well done. So that'll help us in terms of making sure that we frame, uh, our submittal going in, uh, very similarly. Uh, with the hopes that, uh, it'll help speed the approval process. So currently, the team is working on, uh, game planning those submittal documentation requirements, uh, we've. Been able to receive it as much as we get up to this point regarding, uh, the types of documents they wanna see. Uh, if there's any fees associated with, uh, any of the submittals. And we're working on creating a much more detailed, uh, schedule in terms of, uh, when those submittals need to be put in. And so that way, again, we can, uh, make the approval process as smooth as possible. Uh, with that, can open up to any questions?
Great, thank you. Uh, Director Martin? Director Maya?
Yes, the negative impact report. There's also another, uh, no, that's exactly what I was gonna ask you about the negative impact report. Not the full. Environmental impact report, DIR, but there's another report. It probably should be done, just for the general area to make sure that we. Cover our bases in the future.
That is another aspect that we discussed with, uh, the environmental consultant on how best to position the district for, uh, future development as well, so. Uh, at this point, we're looking at a two-pronged attack, so, uh, the first one being, what can we do now to make sure that this, uh, the Critical Service Center project? Uh, goes smoothly and isn't impacted, uh, then the second piece would be, uh, what, uh, can we do now? Uh, in order to prepare the district for that future, so, uh, there's a couple of different things we. We're game planning, I think the, the meeting next week with the city, uh, will probably help clarify a lot of those items and we can speak to that at the next update.
Next question is, well, it's a statement early. That block wall. Was put there to protect. The corporate yard. People were crawling over the block wall. So they put up a chain link fence with barbed wire, so they can no longer do that. So that's why. You see a chain link fence with barbed wire and a block wall. So I don't know how, we're just gonna address that in the future. That's the case, now. There's a road, a dirt road, it's gonna. People pulling in there, they're gonna wanna go down it. So who's gonna be responsible for paving of that road, because there again, you have environmental problem with. EM ten and that kinda thing and. I actually witnessed a, uh, one of our vendors getting stuck in the dirt there. And having to get put a tow it out, so that's a huge problem. The. Stormwater, it comes down the park lane. Our last rain. Where the gas station is, the lower, the C and G station is, that was all flooded out. The dirt road was all flooded. Who's gonna be responsible for that stormwater? Um, and the grading, I guess there was some talk about how the grading part of it was gonna. Go off onto the, uh, park system and there was a catch basin there. The last time I was there, a couple of days ago. It, it appears that the city leveled that all off and there's no longer a catch basin and. So. The grading's gonna need to go out to the street, which is gonna increase more of that floodwater. So who's gonna be responsible for the street and, uh, putting in the storm drains for that? And will we have in the future? Room at the Horton Plant to handle the stormwater, because it really should go out to. Across the street of, on Palm Drive. And stop there and there should be a storm drain there to collect the water that's been running down and. Relieve the flooding downstream and upstream. So, those are my questions.
Mr. Uh, the first one regarding fencing, so, uh, even at the, uh, other site, when we designed that, there would still be security fencing. So as mu- as much as I mentioned that, though, we're, we're gonna create a better connection, there will still be a level of security to make sure that. Uh. The district allows people in when they see fit and not just have people come in. Uh, so normally that's handled with, uh, especially in, um. More aesthetic areas, an ornamental fence, and that can usually about eight foot is a typical security height. So it can always go taller too, if there are, uh. And that can usually about eight foot is a typical security height, so it can always go taller too if there are uh greater issues. Or um whatnot that the district sees, so that one will be resolved um as we go further into the design. The um, the city did mention uh a lot of different aspects regarding park uh road. And one of the items I did note was potentially blocking off that road as it uh goes past uh the corporate yard site. Uh, just because, just like you were mentioning, people are driving in it, some people get stuck. Uh, I think the city also mentioned illegal dumping. Um, they also did discuss uh some other uh storm drain system um issues in that area. So as we move further with the uh water quality management plan, um the BMPs, best management practices regarding stormwater system. Uh, we're going to work closely with the city and uh we'll we'll see where those lines will be drawn. And uh we'll make sure we uh report that to the team moving forward.
The bottom line here is, the next report we get from you will know what's going to happen with the road and the stormwater. Is that correct?
At at least an update in terms of discussions with the city. So there still may be not definitive answers, I would say, but uh we'll at least have uh options. And uh be able to report uh any of those discussions that we have with the city.
There's going to be a significant cost to the district. And the Palm Drive and Park Lane, the road out there, I got to thinking about that. And that's the kind of an emergency lane in the middle of it. So if they put a stoplight in there and make it into a turn lane, there may be a problem there with emergency services. So I'm really not quite sure where we're at there with with that. And we also have the uh county wants to build a uh complex there. I don't know if it's a one-story or a two-story or a three-story, but that's going to impact that area also.
And the city has done a traffic study. To this, I'm not sure exactly what's been included in that. So we'll make sure we get a copy of that with the city to see what's already been factored in. And in talking with our environmental consultant, uh we'll have to do uh our due diligence too in terms of um allocating any additional load. That's going to happen because of this development and we'll coordinate that with the city too to make sure that uh the overall impact is accounted for. And, you know, every aspect is is worked through.
The General Manager Macy, when you get that information, would you please forward it to me?
Well, we will present that in open session.
Director Duff, any questions? Vice President Griffin?
No, thank you very much. Glad you met with the city and um happy to see the way things are going.
Thank you very much, Alvin.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, Sewer Service Rules and Regulations, Article Six, Industrial Discharge Update.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. I'll ask our engineering manager, Eric Watt, to go over uh the update. Eric?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item fourteen of the agenda pertains to the Sewer Service Rules and Regulations, Article Six, Industrial Discharges. At the December twenty twenty-three board meeting, staff presented to the board a proposed draft of Article Six. The Sewer Service Rules and Regulations. Now, the said updates include expanding upon permit application details, uh annual reporting inspections. And other related information. Additionally, uh water quality limitations were updated. To be consistent with the district's current treatment plant waste discharge permits with the regional water board. As part of the update, the district reviewed uh industrial dis- waste discharge regulations. Including specific to the cannabis industry from different public agencies such as uh Coachella Valley Water Authority. CBWD, City of Atlanta, um LA County Sanitary District. And uh East Bay Municipal Utility District as well. The ordinance now includes a maximum permit term of five years and is non-transferable. And the district reserves the right to amend the permit conditions as may be required to meet the regulations from the state water board. And or the regional water board. Finally, the testing section was updated to include specific sampling and water quality testing requirements. In accordance with the US EPA standards as well as requiring uh documented chains of custody. On uh January eighth, twenty twenty-four, staff posted on the district's webs- website the draft updates to Article Six. Uh, likewise, the general manag- general manager Macy also attended the CB CAN meeting. On December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, to take an opportunity to speak about the proposed changes to Article Six. At the March, in the upcoming March twenty twenty-four meeting, the board will be presented an opportunity. To fully uh ratify and endorse this uh amendment, Article Six. To the uh Sewer Service Ordinance. Um, are there any questions?
Director Duff?
Just one, and I touched on it last time we talked about this. In this, it with our industrial um users that are going to apply to this. We need to have some sort of a uh compliance inspection annually or biannually by our staff. Um, and it should somehow be billed to that business. Um, I don't know that there's anything written in there. Um, we don't have it in front of us, your finished project product. But um I feel that it's important that in that hand-to-hand work with um these businesses in our in our district. We need to be visiting regularly because they do have a large turnaround in their employees. And although we're holding them responsible, we need to participate on a regular basis. That's my only comment.
Uh, Vice President Griffin?
Uh, nothing.
Director Martin? Director Myra? Thank you very much, Eric. Item fifteen, we already covered. Moving on to consent agenda, consists of item sixteen, approval of minutes, and item seventeen, register of demands. Would anyone like to pull one of those items today? Go ahead, Vice President Griffin.
Uh, I just had a question for Arturo. I don't know where they always says, but um. Seventeen. Um, I I just noticed that there are numerous triple line items. And I was trying to, I was trying to understand, so if you could just.
Uh, absolutely. Thank you, uh Vice President uh Griffith. Uh, in the process of being transparent, uh whenever there is a correction to a check that we have to void and reissue. We want to present that information to you so that you can see what happened with those items. And those are the usually the three items that you see, all the exact amount, one, two of them, uh positive, one negative. For that initial correction and reissue of the check. Um, so that's primarily why we have to show.
And and why so many corrections?
Uh, there's usually uh issues with, uh, for example, I if you're referring to specifics, one of them was CB Strategies. When we paid their, when we received their invoices, it was about three invoices uh that we received. When we paid it with a credit card, their credit card company rejected that payment. Uh, they said it was too high that they don't accept payments over five thousand, I believe. So we had to cancel that payment, reissue it individually for those uh three items.
But I'm talking, there's numerous um customer refunds. And that's why, what what would be the mistakes on those that we would have so many in a month?
And it happens where uh I know that Lisa's been working on cleaning up a a lot of those. If it takes a while for us to get uh to those items, uh we have customers that have moved out. They call in, said, I don't, I have not received payment. We have to basically void and reissue. Uh, at that point, I think she was trying to do them all at the same time, and that's why you see that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, Brett? Director Duff?
Um, thank you. I had the same question, so thank you for asking it. And then um additionally, well, actually, I'm going to go back to that. Does this have anything to do with the fact we're no longer doing our own mail and that it's being mailed by the outside facility?
It is not. It has always been this case. Um, it it just this time we happen to have more because we're saving them to do a cleanup at the same time. Otherwise, you'll see a lot of these throughout the year.
Yeah, I mean, we've had mailboxes stolen recently, I can only imagine. Um, and then the only other question I had was, um, see what page is this? Page three oh four, uh, there was a IRS refund paid back for quarter three of twenty twenty-three. Could you explain that?
Yes, uh, when we were paying the uh one of the quarters, uh, as you know, you have to be very specific in the dates that you enter that information. It was uh entered incorrectly, and so what happens is the IRS turns around and says you've overpaid because you're quote, you applied it. To one of the quarters that it was not supposed to be. So we got the check and immediately turned around and paid it uh for the correct quarter. And so that's basically what I was.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything further? Uh, directors' reports, does everyone find going Monday, Tuesday? Item nineteen, General Manager's Report.
Uh, the General Manager's Report is in the document or in the agenda packet. Uh, with the president's concurrence, we would like to do our presentations on Tuesday. That's okay with the board? Then we'll do it on Tuesday. Thank you.
Item twenty, District Council Comments?
So on Tuesday, we will have a closed session. Um, I won't be here, uh uh since we're having the meeting on a Tuesday, I have council meetings every Tuesday. So uh the attorney that would have been appearing uh remotely to do the closed session item that he's been working on will most likely be the one coming. Okay.
Thank you. Directors' comments? Director Martin?
Yes, I I want everybody to take a look at this. This represents a lot of work on the part of staff. And I think that they ought to be commended for all of the hard work it took to put this thing together. And I want to also uh commend uh um the Dory for the work that she did. By making copies of everything and getting it all in here for our review. This is amazing. So hats off to to staff and and Dory. Thank you.
Director Mya?
Yes, then thank you, Dory. I know I asked for a little extra and I appreciate you putting it together for me.
Director Duff?
Thank you as always, and I'll save other comments for Tuesday.
Vice President Griffin?
Uh, thank you. Also, though, um, I want to point out that at least for maybe not Ted, but for most of us, this is not all of it. There was an additional two hundred and some pages of the handbook. Um, it was quite a lot of reading, I can tell you. Uh, and I think people don't really understand sometimes that we have a lot of reading and a lot of research to do. Um, but it also to me is indicative of, I think, the change in the trajectory of the district. The amount of work that's going on and the speed at which it's getting done. Um, I know usually things move at a very slow pace, but uh it just seems to me like we're getting so many things done on so many fronts. And um I I'm grateful we have the staff to do that, so um thank you to everybody for all their hard work.
And I'll just echo those comments. Uh, thank you to staff and also thank you to my fellow board members. It's a lot to go through and I appreciate all the questions and discussion we have at each of these meetings. And with that, meeting is adjourned.